Okay, I'd like to call the order the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of March 29th, 2021 to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right, see, just a little organized here for a minute. Okay. Seven o'clock hearing is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Number one, reconvene the hearing on a petition to consider amendments to the Hopkinton zoning ordinance in the farm viability ordinance in chapter 26 entitled non-residential photovoltaic solar energy systems, ESES, as amended January 22nd, 2019, filed by Tom and Cynthia Skolko, 192 Woodville Road, Hopkinton, R.I., 02833, and 132 East 95th Street, New York, New York. The application is filed in accordance with section 16 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hopkinton as amended. The hearing was continued to March 29th, 2021 during the March 1st, 2021 Town Council meeting. Proposal would amend sections 2, 5, 5.3, 5.5 through 5.7, and 10 of the zoning ordinance in order to substantially revise the manner in which major minor accessory and contaminated solar energy system proposals, including roof mounted commercial solar energy systems are considered and approved throughout the town of Hopkinton. Proposed changes include, but are not limited to, limiting principal use commercial solar energy system to manufacturing zones, requiring land development project review for principal use, commercial solar energy systems, requiring special use permit approval for such uses, altering the dimensional requirements for such uses and establishing a precedence of approval when multiple approvals are required. The application describing the proposed amendment is a 22-page document that if adopted would represent a comprehensive overhaul of the town's regulation for all proposed solar energy systems throughout. One second here, while I take a drink after reading that. It looks like the applicant's representative is present.
I'm here, Mr. Council President.
Okay, thank you, sir. All fees, pays and notices have been posted, Lisa, I'm sure of that. And now is, now up is the council discussion. So with, with the council discussion, I would like to, well, I would like to recognize that I, I myself had submitted a a copy of some proposed amendments that I wanted to discuss tonight, so. That being said, I would like to go through, through the ordinance, take a look at it from the beginning. I know that we've made a lot of progress in certain areas, but we were kind of hung up on some certain areas. So I would like to touch on the area that I thought we were hung up on and, and I want to offer up some language here. But before I do, is there anyone else that has any, any opening comments or any, anything that?
Yes, Councilman Hurst, Scott Billhurst, I would like to ask the solicitor. One of the things in law, and I'm not a lawyer, but I, I have some understanding of the law, of course. I'd like to know from a legal perspective, the proposed ordinance, where we're going. Is there any concern, and I don't expect you to answer it tonight, that some of these plans could be construed legally too restrictive in property rights and also would it be considered something like a taking in law? And I know in zoning, there's a, a taking in law about taking away, you know, somebody's property rights to like to an extreme. And that, that entered my mind and also I'm interested in how other communities respond to this because it seems that Hopkinton is doing things that normally other communities have not done, or great many other communities haven't done. Thank you.
Mr. President, this is Steve Seipol, the Solicitor. I, I don't see any reason why the council cannot. Well, I'll start over. I don't see any reason why the council can't enact the ordinance in the way that it's proposed. I, I don't think there's any reason why you can't prohibit large-scale solar developments in the manner that's, that's been suggested. There's very few land uses that the town is required to allow, and solar would not be one of those. So I, I don't, and, and a taking is generally a very high standard that requires, you know, that the property would, someone's property would not be useful for, for any use, and, and I don't think that's the case here. So I don't see any, any type of a takings issue.
Thank you, Solicitor, for answering my question. Thank you. Mr. President, Council Gary, I have a question for Attorney Squares.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Attorney, I know I've asked this question before, but for the benefit of the people who might be listening in on Zoom or on the phone, did the applicants sit any, sit on any boards or commissions or anything like that in town of Hopkinton?
No, I don't, I don't believe they, they have.
Thank you, Solicitor.
I, Solicitor, I believe in Councilman Hurst again. I don't believe Mr. Skolko is a qualified lecturer of Hopkin, and I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong on that. In order to be on a board or commission, you have to be a qualified lecturer of the town of Hopkinton, so I don't think he would be probably eligible, and I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong on that.
I'm sorry, Scott, was that directed toward me?
Stephen Seipol, please, or whoever, can you answer that question?
I, this is the Steve Seipol, the Solicitor, again. I, I, I'd want to refer to the town's charter and ordinances before I answered a question about who's qualified to serve on a board. I can certainly get back to you on that. But I, I don't know that that would have any effect on their ability to propose an ordinance amendment, though.
Well, I don't think Councilman Hurst, they certainly can certainly propose things, but Counselor Gary said something about serving on any boards or commissions, and when you, if you look at the application for non-salary position, it says on the bottom, there's a check area, checkoff area for the town clerk's office to ascertain if they're a qualified lecturer in the town of Hopkin. It's just in response to Counselor Gary's remark not that you have to hold office or even be a voter to propose something in Hopkin in which you don't. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else from anyone else before I, before I begin? Okay, not, not hearing anything else. If you've all taken, taken a look at what I have proposed for this ordinance, there were a couple of changes that I would like to make. Changes that were sent out and posted on the town website were in relation to, they were on page 12, section H. And, and what is present in section H was contaminated site solar, and this is all regarding contaminated site solar. It says, letter H, contaminated site solar and manufacturing zones shall occupy no more than 75% of a lot. It's also of a wetlands, which is included, which is to include inter row and panel collector spacing. Now, I, I wanted to strike that language, and I wanted to add what you have seen, what I submitted. Now, after having some more thought, I had a, what I would like to do is strike what I have submitted, and this is the addition that I would like, and I would like, section H on page 12, read as follows. Contaminated site solar shall not occupy more than 150% of the actual contaminated area as recognized by the D E M. So that would only allow for solar to be put on actual contaminated areas on a contaminated site.
Steve, can you say that again?
Sure. So I'm going to strike out H as is in the clean document, and I also want to strike out what I am proposing for letter H. And I want to change that to read as follows. Contaminated site solar shall not occupy more than 150% of the actual contaminated area on site as recognized by the Department of Environmental Management. So that would mean if a site is one acre, it would, you, you would, you would be allowed 1.5 acres of solar on that.
Can I ask you one more time to read as recognized by the last part?
By the Department of Environmental Management.
Thank you.
So that would give some leeway on a contaminated site to, to allow coverage of the actual contaminated footprint.
Okay.
And then I would like to, in section I, just below that, let me just take one quick look here. And I am, and, and I would like to keep eye as it reads in my proposal, which I will read out right now. Letter I, forested areas shall not be clear cut for the purpose of installing solar installations. Clearing of natural vegetation shall be limited to what is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the solar energy system. It shall not exceed 25% of the existing tree and vegetation cover. Are there any objections to that language? Not hearing any objections. Attorney Squares, would you please add that to that if you're keeping track here?
I will add that now.
Thank you, sir. And I, I do have one question here. If you go right above H where it says number two, I think it should actually be a one. But I have a question on that. As it reads, and I will read it, I, I just wanted to get a legal opinion as to whether or not that is needed in there, number two, based upon the language that I have suggested for H. I will read it. The size of the contaminated site solar energy system considers and is reflective of the size of the contaminated area. Any land use restrictions placed on the site, the amount of disturbance necessary to remediate the contaminated area, and the cost of remediation activities, and any potential negative visual impacts to the surrounding neighborhood.
Mr. Council President, this is Peter Squares on behalf of the applicants. With the language that you've just suggested for H, I think that that is less, is not necessary anymore, and because that paragraph two, just above it, was intended to tie the, tie the size of the contaminated site solar energy system roughly to the size of the contaminated site. But if, if you're going to have a fixed percentage, then I don't think that that paragraph is necessary anymore.
Okay, thank you, sir. So if there's no objection to that from anyone else on, on the council, I would like to, to remove that as well, or just redline that.
Council Presidents, Bob Marvel.
Go ahead, Bob.
Just, just a question on your proposed wording for letter H.
Yes, sir.
I just wonder if 150% is a little bit high. I, I can understand in a small, a site whether contamination is, is limited to an acre or two, but if we, and, and in this list of contaminated sites, there's a total acreage, but I don't see any acreage that refers to what is actually contaminated. But, you know, in, in case of like, for instance, the Grills property, the 680 acres. If there's 100 acres of contamination, or 50 acres of contamination, we're allowing another 25 acres of solar. I'm just asking the question, is that something we should consider maybe dropping it a little bit?
Sure, I'm going to, I would like to see if Jim Lampier has any, any information on the, on the Grills property, because the way that I understand it, I believe that is part of the Hopkinton Land Trust property. He, he may have some more, more information. Hey, Jim, you have the floor, please?
Yes, Mr. President, Jim Lampier. I inquired with D E M regarding that Grills property, and yes, it is a large number of acres, but the actual contamination, I was told, is probably a relatively small area, and it's in close proximity to the railroad tracks. And so the only place that I know the railroad tracks cross through Hopkinton is on the southern side of Route 91. That's where the tracks go through. So I, I think it's over there. I don't even, I don't believe it's anywhere near Chase Hill Road, even though Chase Hill Road is mentioned on the, on the table there.
All right. Thank you very much, Jim. And to kind of touch on what Bob is, you know, and I mentioned with this table here, I would also like to obviously clean this table up. I think this table needs just a little more clarification, I think. You know, instead of project name, I mean, you could have project name, but also the actual address. Because I've also looked down here where I see on this chart where it says the Bali property, and it says Alton Road. I, I believe that property is the 350 Woodville Alton Road property. If anybody has any, any, any knowledge of that, just, could you please speak up or raise your hand?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. That is that product, the town's property I've, is commonly known as.
Okay, right. So, so my point in that is that if you look at this chart where it says, you know, obviously project, I mean, this looks like it's something that was kind of pulled off a spreadsheet, Department of Environmental Management. So, you know, it's kind of really not clear here where you see the Bali property, Alton Road, whereas it should read 350 Alton, I mean, Woodville Alton Road, and that site size is, is not two acres. That site size is about 97 acres, and, and I'm assuming it's, it's two acres of contaminated area. But I would, I would hate to assume in this situation. So if there's a, an avenue in which we can get this, this particular part cleaned up a little bit to, to better reflect what is, what is actually the case in these situations, that would be great. Jim, is that something that you would be able to help us with, or is there another?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can, I can work with D E M on that. It's my understanding that the area of contamination on the Bali property is roughly two acres. But again, as you pointed, correctly pointed out, this table is not consistent because the Grills property is, does not consist of 680 contaminated acres.
Right.
So, so yes, it needs to be, it needs to be proofread, this table, which I can do with, with D E M.
Excellent, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, and then they go and down it. Bob, does that kind of help out with some of what you were potentially kind of thinking about? I mean, that is kind of eye-opening, 680 acres and potentially having a large, you know, contaminated area of that size would definitely be.
Yeah, absolutely. That helps. Thank you.
All right.
This is, this is Sharon Davis. Jim Lampier, if you're going to be working with D E M, maybe they should put in writing on all of these projects, I mean, these, yeah, all of these sites, contaminated sites, the total specific contamination amount, and the, the the amount of the, the true site of the, of the project. So we have two columns that are in writing from D E M.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. And so, so now looking at section J. After that, we're saying contaminated site solar energy system shall be subject to the following requirements. Now, you know, this has kind of been a bit of a discussion, and, and I know we do have, I think there may be an, an appeal before the zoning board on this, but I know there's been talk in the past as far as, you know, setting up work hours and stuff like that. I was kind of curious if, if anybody else felt this way about it, if they felt that work hours should, should possibly be included in this.
I agree that it should be included.
Okay.
I do as well.
Yeah, Steve, Council Gary, I agree with that. Eight to five, no Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah, that sounds good. I like that. I think that's, that's pretty reasonable. So Attorney Squares, if, if you would please add that to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Council.
So as I move down here, I see a number four. I would, in section J, number four, right under it, where it says 150-foot wooded buffer. I am proposing 100 feet. Seventy, and a number two, right under 100 feet would be, I am proposing 50 feet instead of a 55, a 75-foot partial landscape screen, and then 25 feet for the full landscape screen. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, Council, Council, I'm offered Council Gary, kind of, I kind of disagree with that.
Okay.
We should leave it at the, the 150, the 75, and 30, I believe it is. It's only because there was, when the Chayso Project Hill was done, I'm sorry, not Chayso project, when the door farm was done, they were, the contractor was able to go right up against the stone wall to someone's house. I think anytime we do one of these things where it's allowed, the bigger the buffer, I think, gives the, it gives a better, gives a better, a better look.
Okay, that sounds, I mean, that, again, that was up for discussion. I just wanted to put it out there. I see Bob Marvel's kind of shaking his head like, like he's in agreement with you.
Yeah, Bob Marvel here. I, I agree. I, I think the, the higher, the higher bigger sizes for buffers are going to protect the, the butters a little bit better.
Okay. All right, so I, there's at least three of us here, so I think we have a consensus on that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of change my stance on that, and I'm gonna go with, with the opinions of Counsel Gary and Counselor Marvel. So if you could just leave it as, as is, sir, and, and we'll be good to go. So so before I move on any further, were there any other changes or concerns up to that point from pages one through 12 that anyone had? And I actually, before I open up to the other council members, I did have one more section here where it's under definitions, actually, sorry to make you flip, keep flipping back, but it's on page two. And it's where it says remediated and restricted contaminated sites. Kind of brought to my attention that maybe we should, um, remove just this language. So, so what we would do is make number two, number one, and number three, number two, and strike out number one, but somehow put in February 16th, 2021 as the, as the cutoff date. So number, so what I'm proposing is to change, it would read as follows. A property, one, on which remediation activities were conducted to the satisfaction of Ryden as documented within a letter of compliance or an interim letter of compliance. And two, for which Ryden has required the use of the property to be restricted through an environmental land use restriction. Then it says, see the complete list, our complete list of below sites, which that list of sites is going to be updated by Jim after he talks with the. Is there any objection? Okay, with no objection.
Mr. Council President, if I could just jump in, so that, so we're gonna strike the first.
I, I wanted to know why. I'm sorry, my, my thing was muted. I wanted to know why he wanted to take number one out.
All right, well, let me get a better explanation. I, I was, I had a conversation with, with the Solicitor earlier, and, and he kind of, can you hear me, Sharon?
Yes, I can hear you.
I, I had a discussion with the Solicitor earlier, and he, he had a recommendation by someone who was talking, I, I believe, from, from D E M. Pretty spoiled, would you, I mean, Seipol, excuse me, would you please elaborate on that?
Um, well, I, I'd actually rather defer to Mr. Lampier. The, the, the information that I received was, was secondhand based on a conversation he had with someone that, at the state agency.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, Mr. President. I was speaking with Mark Denon this afternoon at D E M, and because I sent him the latest version of the ordinance, and I asked, I asked him to take a look at the definitions for contaminated site solar and remediated and restricted contaminated sites, and both, both him and his colleague at D E M, Mr. Bob Schmidt, they suggested that the town refrain from using the word hazardous in this, in this ordinance, because
Okay.
be, because that has a, a special legal connotation, which is a little bit different than contaminated. They're two, they're two different terms, and when you start talking about hazardous materials, you could be talking about some very dangerous items, and we certainly don't want to declare that any of these sites are, are that dangerous, because they, they, they may not in fact contain any hazardous materials.
So, Steve, this is Sharon. Can you just take out as having contained a hazardous material?
Yep. Yes, you just read my mind, Sharon. Yep, exactly. We can leave the first part in as a property that has been identified and confirmed by Ryden as of February 16th, 2021, and we will strike as having contained a hazardous material.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Any discussion on that?
I agree with it. Bob Marvel.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So back to what I was saying. So off to page twelve, um, you know, pages one through twelve, were there any? Changes, proposals, discussion, anybody you wanted to have on regarding any of this?
Council President, Bob Marvel here.
Yes, sir.
I was looking through the requirements, uh, on, under item J, um, and on page thirteen. Um, item three, so I was looking back on the older versions, uh, of the draft. Where we had a lot of, um, a lot of these requirements for, um, primary site and so forth. Um, and I had made notes, uh, based on some requested recommendations from Elaine Calderon. To add, um, some protections for the Woodpucktuck River and scenic tributaries. Um, and so in, instead of, you know, just leaving that out, I thought maybe. Um, there's a couple of items here that, that look like they were, uh, similar to, um, where she had asked. The, uh, the additional wording be added. The first one is item three. Um, and so I'm gonna propose that we add at the end of item three. Um, where it says, um. I'll just read item three, solar energy system shall be cited and designed to prevent or minimize any negative aesthetic impacts. On neighboring properties, conservation areas, rivers, ponds, or public roads. And to avoid any compromise of prominent view sheds. And I would suggest adding, um, comma, or of any view sheds, including. Any wild and scenic river or tributary. Um, period. And then next sentence. No portion of the system shall intrude on any area within a quarter mile of a river, river tributary. Or any integral body of water. And that's up for discussion.
Can you read it one more time?
Oh, yeah, I'll read.
Just your addition.
It's just my addition, so.
After view shed.
After view sheds, it would be comma, or of any view sheds, including any wild and scenic river or tributary. Period. No portion of the system shall intrude on any area within one quarter mile. Of a river, tributary, or any integral body of water.
One more time, the sentence, no portion shall intrude.
No portion of the system, no portion of the solar system. Shall intrude on any area within one quarter mile of a river, tributary. Or any integral body of water.
Mister President, Council Gary, I, uh, concur with, uh, Council Marvel on that.
Intrude, what do you mean by intrude? Does it mean you're talking like proximity?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, so what it means, the way I interpret it is. Of the solar project cannot build any part of it within a quarter mile of any river. Uh, or tributary or any large body of water. So essentially, you're, you're creating a, a quarter mile buffer between the solar project and any. Body of water that's, uh, integral to our, um, our aquifer.
Not, um, quarter mile, I mean, that's. Is that about thirteen hundred feet, if not more, fifteen hundred feet, close to that?
That was.
I mean, quarter mile fifty two eighty is a mile. I mean, that's. It's a long ways.
That was, I think, um, what was almost achieved at the, um. In, in, in discussions with the, uh, the latest property on, uh, Chase Hill Road. I forget the name of it.
Kamali.
Oh, the Kamali property, because it was, uh, close to, um. A trail and a bridge. Originally, it was close and then they, they backed off, uh, a section of it. So it was, I don't think it's quite a quarter of a mile, but it's almost.
I, um. I, I just have a slight, um. I, I, I just have a slight issue with it on, on a contaminated sites, only because the, you know, it's gonna be very limited, you know, we've. You know, in our, in our earlier proposals for, for ends across the board on large scale solar, you know, I kind of felt that, uh. You know. That was, not to say it's not important, but that it kind of would, you know, potentially. Have more of an effect, you know what I mean? So we are, you know, kind of limited, um. On what's gonna be out there as far as contaminated sites go. Um, and the fact that we are working on contaminated sites, you know, we're actually gonna, um. You know, uh, put a use to them. I mean, so that's kind of, so I, I, I mean, a quarter mile. Me is just, I mean, it's, it's kind of steep. I mean, I really, um. I mean, I'm not in agreement, but somebody else might be. So that's really, I, I'm just kind of giving you my, uh, my two cents. If Sharon or, um.
Uh, uh, can I, this is Sharon. Can I comment?
You can, please.
Yeah, I agree with Bob Marvel. Put it in.
Yeah. Council Chair, Council Gary, yeah, I, I agree. I concur with, uh, both Council Marvel and Council Davis on that one.
Hey, I mean, if that's the council's, uh, consensus, then I'm, then I'd like to, uh, to add that language to it.
Also, Min Hurst, and I'm just remaining, I'm gonna try to remain quiet tonight, but I, I want to. There's different types of contamination and I did, uh. For the Kamali grant, it was, uh, then Council President Franklin Dolphy last year and I. I knew that property very well because, uh, I knew the Perry family and, uh. But, uh, the only thing, uh, we got, uh, the only thing that really bothers me is the fact that. We have a, a list of what DM considers contaminated, but. There were a lot of activities that were done in Hopkins through the years that the DM might not even know about. And I'm a little concerned about those type of, uh, places like former garages and. To what, to what extent there was contamination. So I'm basically gonna keep my mouth shut tonight and just take everything in. And, uh, occasionally I might say something, but I, I'm really interested in what the public has to say and. Things of that nature. So, uh, but I do think that we have to realize when we're dealing with contamination. That's only as far as the DM knows because people have had different activities. Uh, cargo, uh, repair shops and other things that. There could be some, uh, what they were in, uh, excavation business, uh. That they deal with, uh, few fuel oils and other things of that nature. So. Uh, there's different variations of contamination. Maybe none at all, but others because of the work that was done. At that particular site. So, uh, just to, uh, keep that in mind and I'm just gonna absorb what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Council President, this is Bob Marvel. I mean, we can certainly, uh, go less than a quarter mile. Uh, I'm just, uh. You know, documenting what was asked for originally and, and, you know, totally understood that that was originally asked for. Uh, under a different purpose. So. We can consider a different, a different, uh, distance.
Leave it a quarter mile.
What's that?
I said, leave it a quarter mile. You know, the whole point of this, there's only, like I said, four, about four projects. On that list that we have to worry about that somebody's really gonna do something and, and submit, uh, a, a project. It's very, it, it, we're really reducing the situation down to about four potential projects at the most. Um. The majority of this solar ordinance is saying no more large solar projects, period. So. There's gonna be very, very few. Coming forward. From this point on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
This Council Hurst, I just think it's important for me to point out, we have, uh, people who are interested in. The, uh. The farm land viability and how it's gonna impact the town. And I think that's something. That people really want to, at least one person wants to address the council on. And, uh, you know, this town can't be just, uh, the town officials running the town. Uh, what the, the public thinks, uh, residents think is very important. So. Very important to get that input and encourage it and not to have long drawn out meetings where they have to wait a long time and get frustrated. When they want to address the council and elected leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, the public will both have their time. We're gonna move through this. Um, I don't really see. I mean, these are small little points we're touching on here, Scott. I kind of want to get these little kind of, or these details out of the way so we can open up. And, uh, and give them the floor for that. I agree, uh, the people should be heard. I mean, that's, you know, part of, uh. Part of a democracy, right? So let's, um, let me see if, um.
Council Mo or Council Gary, can we go back to a step? I hate to go backwards and.
Sure, no, no, that's fine.
Make it, make it extremely correct. Can we go back to page thirteen eighteen, uh, where we talked about the buffers? Where we went from one fifty to back one fifty.
Yeah.
Is there some way in there we can put in, here is my question. Who goes out and checks on that to make sure that the contractor is staying within the boundaries? Is it our responsibility? Is the building inspector? Is the planning department? My thing is, is it's easy to sit there and say, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do the one fifty, but who actually goes out there and checks on it? Is there a checkpoint somewhere in the process that somebody can actually go out and say, okay, this is where we're at? Uh, Jim Lampier, as if you're on, could, maybe could you help us out or help me out?
Uh, yes, uh, Council, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, um, well, the, the responsibility of the developer is to build the project to the approved plan. At the end of the day, that's all you can hold any developer to is what, what plan was approved by the planning board. And so as far as going out and checking, um, we have, uh, Crossman Engineering who goes out and, um. Once the engineer for the project certifies that the construction is complete, uh, Crossman will go in there and they will review the project. To ensure that the project has been built in adherence to the approved plans. And then that, that's done in conjunction with the building and zoning department, with my department, the planning department. So it's, it's, it's a team effort to ensure that they, uh, have built the project appropriately.
Thank you, Jim. Council, Council Moffett, is there somewhere we can put it a line item that at a certain time in accordance with what Jim's saying? That it just needs to be checked instead of taking somebody's word for it?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to propose some language for that potentially, um, in, and we can discuss it. I mean, I don't think it. It needs to be, you know, complicated. I think it could.
No, not at all, not at all.
Straightforward, um, I would, um, um, shall propose landscape. I don't personally know. I mean, I mean, maybe Jim could offer that up. In how, how frequently, I mean, obviously, you know, your concern is too, is, um, you know, how frequently are they actually checking on it and making sure that it is? What it should be, you know, and, and it's not, I mean. The timing, I don't know if it's, you know, I mean, if there's a, a checklist, you know, per se, that like, okay, they've met this, then kind of move forward. I mean. I would think they probably would have some sort of, um. Temporary marking of where it should be, you know, before they go in, uh. Or at least marked out. So, I mean, I don't know, Jim, if you're there and you want to suggest, um, some language that would satisfy what Council Gary is, um. Is trying to accomplish.
Yes, Mister Chairman, if I could just, uh, suggest, looking forward on page sixteen of eighteen. At the bottom of that page, you have five point three point six, inspection and enforcement. And it says, the building and zoning official and the town engineering consultant shall have the power to inspect. Any solar energy system at any time to ensure compliance with the provisions of this ordinance. I think the language is already there.
Counselor, Counselor, I agree with, uh, the town planner on that. If he's good with it, I'm good with it. My point was, I just don't want, I just don't want to reinvent the wheel, which we've have a couple of times where. We put buffers out on stuff, not us, but past councils put buffers out on stuff. Then all of a sudden, next door, then all of a sudden we have what we had with the last big solar event. That's all I'm saying. But I feel confident with Jim Lampier and his team. I'm good with it. If the language is already in there, I'm good.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for, um, for pointing us in that direction, page sixteen, that clarification. Um.
Yes, sir. Uh, Bob Marvel here, um, if we're, uh, moving on from item three. Um, I did have another item that, uh, Elaine Calderon had recommended or requested originally that I. Thought might fit here, um, and that is, uh, on item eight. Which talks about, um, clearing of natural vegetation for the project. Uh, I would suggest that we add after the end of that. Um, another sentence in that sentence will read. There shall be no clearance of vegetation within four hundred feet distance of a wild and scenic river or tributary. And again, the, the distance, uh, was one that was recommended originally for a different purpose. So. Uh, we can, uh, we can discuss the.
Bob, can you read after four hundred feet, what, what, what it says?
So I'll just read the, the addition in, in completion. There shall be no clearance of vegetation within four hundred feet distance of a wild and scenic river or tributary.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any discussion on Bob's, um, on Bob's, uh, suggestion or a recommendation?
No.
I think it's fine, should be added.
Council Gary, Counselor, I, uh, I concur.
If you could put that in there, attorney scores, that'd be great.
And we'll do Council President.
Thanks. You have anything further, uh, Council Marvel?
A couple of items further down on page fifteen, but I don't know if we want to, uh, go through others. Uh, on the list before that.
Does anyone, does anyone else? Excuse me, uh, this is Council Moffett, um. Does anybody else have anything before we get to page fifteen? Okay, not, not hearing any, Bob, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I guess my question is on item, my first question is item, item twelve. It looks there like there was a strikeout and it, and a change. Was that your change, Steve?
On which one are we looking at?
Item twelve and that's on page fourteen. Um.
I don't, if, if you're looking at mine, on my, cause mine is the, um, hold on, let me look, cause I'm, I'm working off the revised clean draft. Right now.
This one, um, it talks about. This one, um, it talks about setbacks and the, um.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, those are my changes.
Okay, do, would, we wanna discuss those?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, well, uh, they're your changes. Um, you, you're just suggesting a change from uh, six hundred feet in the first setback to one hundred feet, and then from four hundred feet in the second item to one hundred feet. So I don't, I don't know if you wanted to talk about.
Well, doesn't this, you know, actually now that I'm looking at it, isn't, is this kind of redundant as far as what we went over in a section J on page twelve, where we have a hundred foot wooded buffer, seventy-five foot partial landscape screen and a thirty foot full, full landscape screen?
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
I could respond to that. Um, I, I, I don't think it's redundant just because, um, the, the, the screening, um, just requires, you know, that's an area that can't be cut.
I gotcha.
Um, or, or have some other type of screening. This is just about distance from uh, certain, uh, only certain types of, um, uh, property lines. So one, one deals with buffer and the other, one deals with screening, the other one just deals with the, uh, distance.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, my thinking there was, I mean, six hundred feet to me seems kind of extreme. Uh, but now that we've, um, added a quarter mile to any tributary or river or not cutting, you know, four hundred feet from a, from a river or anything like that, I mean, might as well split the difference at, at, at this point. I mean, I don't really, um, so I'm gonna strike that because I'm sure that, um, my suggestion is not gonna be in play anymore. So unless, I mean, uh, unless anybody's made any other notes of this, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I've hadn't read this ordinance many, many, many times. So, um, you know, in my last go through, that was a, a suggestion that I made here. Uh, because, you know, also six hundred feet, depending on the size of the property, I mean, six hundred feet might just, you know, completely exclude any type of contaminated site. So that's kind of could put the kibosh on anything, um. And I'm gonna be willing to bet that, um, with the quarter mile and some of this other stuff, we're probably gonna exclude almost all of our contaminated sites. So, um, I mean, so as we move forward, you know, and, and again, I mean, this is just my opinion, um, without actually getting a measuring tape and, and doing all the math, um, my guess is that we, with those limitations, will probably more than likely put the kibosh on a lot of stuff. I mean, you might as well leave that language in there. Not mine, not my proposal language, the original language. So I'm striking my proposal. So if nobody has any suggestions, then, um, what is in there currently in the clean draft is going to stay in the clean draft. So, but that being said, Bob, is there yet?
More to two other items. Um, on item twenty-one, the very last sentence, um, it's about signage. The very last sentence says, "Any such signage shall comply with the section twenty-seven of this ordinance." And I was not sure what section twenty-seven was referring to or what it said.
Yeah, it's not there.
If it doesn't exist, we should probably strike that, um, or, or amend it somehow.
Unless, is there a section twenty-seven in our sign ordinance that, in our town sign ordinance or?
Uh, Mr. President, this is Steve Seifel, the, uh, Solicitor, uh, section twenty-seven of the zoning ordinance, uh, is, uh, regulating signs.
Yes, okay.
I, I don't know all of the, the contents of that off the top of my head, but there is a section twenty-seven that regulates, uh, signs in the town.
Okay, uh, thank you. Glad I asked the question. Okay, and finally, thank my last.
So then shouldn't that, uh, thing say section twenty-seven of the town's signing ordinance or the town, whatever you just said it was? Whatever, you said it was, was it the zoning ordinance or?
Uh, Councilwoman, yes, I, so I, I think it says, it says this ordinance and this, this is, uh, section, this, uh, proposal is part of the zoning ordinance. So I, I think it is clear enough.
Okay.
Should, I'm not sure. Shouldn't you be saying the word zoning ordinance of the zoning ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Council President, this is, um, uh, Peter Squares for the applicants and, um, uh, I, I would suggest that we, we can, we can make that change to say section twenty-seven of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I agree. Okay. Uh, last item is item twenty-three. Uh, I'm going to suggest, um, that we break up item twenty-three into, uh, two additional sections, item twenty-four and twenty-five. And so the first break is going to start where it says, "The calculation of the decommissioning reserve shall be predicated upon the assumption that one hundred percent of the retired solar panels will be recycled by an accredited solar panel waste recycler, uh, without any credit on the financial guarantee amount for anticipated salvage value or reuse value of any project components." I think that should be broken out as a separate item, just to make it clear. And then after that, the next part of that to the rest of the paragraph should be broken out to another section or not, another item, I'm sorry. So it would be, instead of just item twenty-three, it'd be twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Mr. Council President, we, we can make those changes.
I agree. I'm not suggesting any wording changes. I just think that breaking them out makes the more, uh, clarifies what we're saying. Thank you.
This separates thoughts a little better, or kind of, um, and then I guess, but, uh, good point there, Bob. So was that?
I had, um, on one other, um, question slash potential change, but that's down in, in section five, three, five, from the precedence of approval. Now, if we wanna go there yet or, or talk about some of the other items.
So, I mean, we might as well just keep going right in order with, we're generally to, um, I'm waiting for.
Okay, um, so in section five, three, five, the last, uh, the last sentence reads, um, "If the planning board does not obtain conditional planning board approval of the solar energy system and so, and so forth." And I just thought that the first reference to the planning board maybe should be the applicant instead of planning board.
Mr. Council President, Peter Squares for the applicants, that, that was an error. It should say if the applicant does not obtain.
Thank you. And that's all the changes that I have, all the notes I have.
Any whales ha- have, have any changes of, um, five point three point five precedence of approval?
Steve?
Yes, Sharon.
I object to that precedence of approval. I, I really, um, believe that we should be working according to the zoning ordinance, not the planning development, land development ordinance. Um, that's why I put in our packet, again, uh, chapter forty-five, twenty-four zoning ordinance, section forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-one. It is the same as, um, what our town ordinance is in our appendix, our town appendix A zoning ordinance, section sixteen. And, um, that is the way we have been operating, and I would rather have the zoning um, wording when there needs to be a zone change. So I, I, I object to five point three point five.
Okay.
Are there any other objections? Um, cause I would, um, so I just wanna have this discussion, um, Sharon, I think, um, so you're saying, um, just, and this is just for clarification, um, it's an argument. Um, so section forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty-one is the direction that you want. So, so, so you wanna continue to do what has been done in the past?
Correct.
Okay. Um.
When you require a zone change? Yeah.
I, um, what I, what I would like to do at this moment, I would like to actually read the statute on precedence of approval for the rest of the, uh, counselors. So, just so they know exactly what it is, cause if they, if they haven't read it and, and they've just read what's listed here, there's a little more to, to it than, um, than what's, uh, listed right under here, the presence, uh, precedence of approval. So give me one second here and I'm going to, um, I'm gonna pull it. All right, I'm gonna read the, uh, the whole statute here. This is, um, chapter forty-five dash twenty-three of the subdivision of land section forty-five dash twenty-three dash sixty-one procedure, precedence of approvals between planning board and any other local permitting authorities. Um, it says forty-five dash twenty-three dash sixty-one procedure, precedence of approvals between planning board and other local permitting authorities, A zoning board, where an applicant requires both a variance from the local zoning ordinance and planning board approval, the application is not undergoing undefined development review pursuant forty-five dash twenty-three dash fifty point one. In the local, local zoning ordinance, the applicant shall first obtain an advisory recommendation from the planning board as well as conditional planning board approval for the first approval stage of the proposed project, which may be simultaneous. Then obtain conditional zoning board relief and then return to the planning board for subsequent required approvals. Two, where an applicant requires both a special use permit under the local zoning ordinance and planning board approval, and the application is not undergoing unified development review pursuant to forty-five dash twenty-three dash fifty point one. The local zoning ordinance, the applicant obtained an advisory recommendation from the planning board as well as a conditional plan or approval for the first stage, first approval stage of the proposed project, which may be simultaneous. Then obtain a conditional special use permit from the town, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, from the, from the zoning board, and then return to the planning board for subsequent required approvals. Now, section B says, city or town council, and says, "Where an applicant requires both planning board approval and council approval for zoning ordinance or zoning map change, the applicant shall first obtain an advisory recommendation on the zoning change from the planning board as well as conditional planning board approval to the first approval stage of the proposed project, which may be simultaneous. Then obtain a conditional zoning change from the council and then return to the planning board for subsequent required approvals." So the way that I understand this to be, to follow the presence of approval is, it's going to the planning board and looking for a, a positive recommendation to come to the council, which, um, I think, you know, we put, and, and this is my opinion, and I'm sure other counselors will, will, will have something to share on this, is that, um, we, we put our planning, uh, people, our, our, um, planning board, you know, we vote on them. We put them there based on their, their experience and knowledge. So I am comfortable with, um, with following the route of, uh, a presence of approval for this instance. Um, I think there should be, um, levels of, uh, levels of, um, uh, how do I put it? Just kind of, we should have some checks and balances, you know? Um, I think, uh, we should take the advice of, of, of our planning board. Um, if they are strongly in favor of a project, then I think as a council, we should move probably and take their advice. So, that being said, that, that's my two cents. Um, I'm not sure if, uh, if, if any other counselors have any questions or comments to that.
Counselor Hurst, I, I just want to ask Mr. Seifel, uh, the town council has to protect its, uh, its function and its role in town government, and the planning board has a role in. Uh, I would ask the Solicitor if he feels that there's any uh, infringement on the role of the town council setting planning decisions or development decisions, uh, uh, given to the planning board that rightfully belong to the town council. And I supported, uh, the planning board and multiple, uh, solar, uh, decisions in the last term. Uh, but, uh, would like Mr. Seifel to address whether or not there's any concern with this proposal and its infringement on the, uh, an elected body, the town council, uh, by the planning board, if this ordinance is passed or any way that, uh, we're going or heading. Thank you.
Um, I, I don't think that the town count, I'm not sure how to answer your question exactly, but I, I think that the, the precedence of approval language is, it is a state statute at section forty-five, twenty-three, sixty-one. It is already written into the planning and subdivision regulations for the town. Um, I, I think this is the, the practice that I, I would say most towns probably follow is, is for the planning board to see these projects first, and then for the applicant to come and request a zone change, uh, after that. Uh, I, I feel a little bit like we're beating a dead horse here with this issue. Uh, there, this is an issue that's in the litigation, uh, that the town is, uh, facing right now with a few of the solar projects. Uh, there is no, uh, Supreme Court decision that says there's one way you have to do it or another. Um, it's, it's really a matter of, of policy, I would say, at this point, as to whether the town council wants to, uh, enshrine this as part of the uh, zoning ordinance or, or not. Uh, I, I would advise that this is the, uh, probably more appropriate procedure, but, uh, again, there is no Supreme Court decision on it, and uh, I think at this point, it just comes down to being a matter of policy, uh, for the council members to decide.
Counselor Hurst, I thank, uh, Attorney Seifel for his response.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon.
Okay, so you read your part. I'd like to read my part. And as far as I'm concerned, um, in my opinion, you cannot do, you couldn't, this is really when we're trying to do something that's zone residential and make it something else so that we can put solar on it. And so that to me means that the zoning change has, is more important because they can't do it unless you do the zoning change first. That's the whole point to me. Um, and so I think that the zoning ordinance should take precedence. And I will read forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-one. Adoption procedure for adoption or amendment. The city or town shall designate the officer or agency to receive a proposal for adoption, amendment, or repeal of a zoning ordinance or zoning maps. Immediately upon receipt of the proposal, the officer or agency shall refer the proposal to the city or town council and to the planning board or commission of the city or town. And to the planning board or commission of the city or town. For study and recommendation. The planning board or commissions shall in turn notify and seek the advice of the city or town planning department, if any. And report to the city or town council within forty-five days after receiving the proposal. Giving its findings and recommendations as prescribed in forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-two. Where a proposal for adoption, amendment, or repeal of a zoning ordinance or zoning map is made. By the city or town planning board or commission, the requirements for study by the board may be waived. Provided that the proposal by the planning board includes its findings and recommendations pursuant to forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-two. The city or town council shall hold a public hearing within sixty-five days of receipt of a proposal, giving proper notice as prescribed. In forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-three. The city or town council shall render a decision on any proposal within forty-five days after the date of completion of the public hearing. And so that is what's under the zoning ordinance, the state zoning ordinance, forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-one. That same language is in our town of Hopkinton, appendix A zoning, section sixteen. Number B, procedure for adoption or amendment. The town clerk shall receive all proposals for adoption, amendment, or repeal of the zoning ordinance. And or zoning map. Immediately upon receipt of the proposal, the town clerk shall refer the proposal to the town council. And to the planning board for study and recommendation. The planning board shall in turn notify and seek the advice of the town planner. And shall report to the town council within forty-five days after receipt of the proposal, giving its findings and recommendations. As prescribed in forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-two. When, where a proposal for adoption, amendment, or repeal of the zoning ordinance or zoning map is made by the planning board. The requirements for study by the board may be waived, provided that the proposal by the planning board includes its findings. And recommendations pursuant to Rhode Island general law, section forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-two. What I'm trying to tell you is the words are the same, it's just that the, the state ordinance didn't say the town clerk. They said the city or town shall designate an officer or agency. And we, when we did it for the town, um, the town, uh, appendix A zoning. We said it was going to be the town clerk. And we also, the, the other state, the state ordinance also says about. The city or town planning department and we say the planning, the town planner. So our, the town's, um. Zoning, appendix A zoning, section sixteen, just designated a little bit more clearly that we don't have, you know. A big agency or anything, it's just the town planner is going to do this. But the words are the same, we've been operating this, this way, and to me, I think the zoning ordinance should take precedence over the. The, uh, the development, so.
Council, Council Moffett, Council Gary, I, I would have, I would have to see a copy of. What counselor Davis is talking, there's just, there's just too much.
It's in your packet.
Uh, Mr. Council President?
Yes, Attorney Swartz.
Thank you, um, I, I, I think, um, uh, counselor Davis, you know, raises an interesting point, but. Um, you know, I, I think the way you have to, you have to reconcile the two provisions of the law. Um, and so the, the way that I think the best way to do it. In, in my mind is that the precedence of approval statute under, uh. Chapter twenty-three that you previously read. Um, that sets out a procedure that only deals with one specific type of application. And that's when it requires both an approval from the council. And it requires an approval from the planning board. The, the statute that counselor Davis pointed out is, is the general procedure. That's followed for any application for a zoning amendment. So in my mind, the best way to reconcile these two statutes is that. Uh, generally, the, the statute that counselor Davis would cited would govern. But in a specific circumstance, when one statute references specific circumstance. Um, where a, um, amendment requires two, two areas of approval, one from the planning board and one from the. Under the zoning ordinance, then the other statute would govern in that specific instance. So when dealing with solar, that's the type of application that, that does require both an approval. Under the ordinance that you're enacting now, it does require both approval from the planning board. Um, and approval from the council. Um, so that that's how I read the statute, but beyond that, I'd say I agree with your solicitor. That really it's a question of policy of whether you want to incorporate, which I, my, I think is the. The appropriate reading of state law into your ordinance. The reason we suggested it in our draft, um, is again, you know, working with, um. Uh, working with, um, that the citizens group that we did. Um, that was a concern that they had, um, and I, I, I'm, again, I, I wouldn't say that, um. Uh, counselor Davis raised that concern, um, but they felt some, some prior council member, members. Uh, may have taken too much of the, um, uh, front seat. Uh, in this process when, you know, maybe it would have been better to let it percolate up from the planning board. And then have the council come in, uh, after the, the nitty gritty details are worked out by the planning board. So that's why I think from a policy standpoint is a good, it's a good thing. Because when you see a amendment that comes before you, if it follows the process that, that we're advocating for. By the time it gets to you, all the little details are going to be worked out, all the finer points will be worked out. And then you're going to get a proposal in front of you, you know, you're, you're not going to have open questions. Because the planning board should have already fleshed them out when they're reviewed. So I, I agree with your, your solicitor that ultimately, whether you incorporate this into your ordinance is a policy question. Um, but we think it is a good, a good, uh, policy. It's good policy from our perspective.
Attorney Squirt, Counsel Gary.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, so this for attorney sports, you said you work with the citizens group, did, did I understand that right? And if you did, which group was it?
Uh, I believe it was the, the Hopkinton Citizens Alliance was the name of the group, if I'm saying it correctly.
That helped you come up with?
But they raised issues, so I did the draft, um, and we circulated the draft, um. Ahead of time, um, but you know, obviously. We wanted to get as broad of array of issues as we could before we presented it to you, um, so that, that, that was, uh.
So like, let me ask my question is, did the Soco's present this to you or the Hopkins Citizens Alliance present this to you?
Uh, it, it was an open discussion, the language is mine, the language is mine. Um, but, um, you know, I think that probably was an idea that was, that was discussed. Um, for a while with a number of, uh, the people in that citizens group. Um, and so that's where the idea came from, but the language was mine though.
Counselman Hurst, uh, I think the, the concern is that. And I hope it's made clear, because it's relevant, because there's, there's two anti-solar groups, the committee. The Hopkins Committee for Responsible Planning and then the Hopkins Citizens Alliance, which were basically the same people. And I, apparently one is going out of existence or was just continuing, I guess, in February or whatever. But all these issues and all these players behind the scenes on, on these issues. Apparently one is out of existence or, and I, I can't say that for sure, because I just basically have to, uh. Learn more about it, but we're dealing with, uh, matters that impact people's lives. And, uh. People are always concerned about sources behind the scenes that influence town government and, uh. I just want to point that out, so I mean, I'm just curious where a lot of things originate and who's influencing things behind the scenes. I also would like to eventually, hopefully, in this discussion, we know what the status is, the Hopkins Citizens Alliance. And the committee, Hopkins Committee for Responsible Planning, exactly what their status is, whether they're meeting. Whether they're still in existence and things of that nature and, uh. You know, the power is behind the throne, if you will, uh, but I'm trying to take everything in and, uh. Everybody tries to influence things to their own liking and, uh, we just see where this goes. Thank you.
Is that all you have, Counsel Gary?
Yes, I'm all set. I just, uh, want to make a note into the record on this, what counselor, I had said and counselor said.
Okay, I mean, this, this is all old news. I mean, we've been talking about this ordinance for months now and, and that, and we've had this discussion as far as where. Where, where some of the roots of some of this and some of the influences and stuff like that, just so, I mean, I want to make that for the record, dude, this isn't. Just some bombshell that we just found out.
So I never, I, I disagree with you there, Mr. President, because it was never, Attorney Schwartz never came out and said that.
No, um, I'm sorry, Counsel President, I, I did say that back in December, um, you know, that's, that's not a, um. That, that's, that's not a secret, um, that we work with that group. So, and, and you know, any, any questions you have, I have no, uh, issues with answering them. Um, but, you know, that was about the extent of, of, um, the discussion, you know, that they.
Counselor Harris, I'd like to direct a, uh, question to Counselor, uh, I mean. Uh, Attorney Squirt, exactly what is the relationship? So we know it's, you talk to them once or several times or. Exent, to what extent? Uh, that relationship is because you're having an interest group influence, uh, town regulations. And it's something which I think the public wants to know. Thank you.
Uh, the extent of the relationship is just that, uh, there were a number of people that were in the group. Um, I think that the Scolcos became, uh, somewhat involved in the group. Um, they asked us to draft an ordinance, uh, the Scolcos and, um, you know, we, we let the, uh. Members of that group take a look at it to. Uh, let us know what they thought, that the draft, and then we presented the draft to you. There's, there's no relationship beyond that.
Thanks for your response. Attorney Seiple, Counsel Gary. Could you give a little input on this if you could?
Um, Councilman, I'm not sure I have any, uh, input to give, I don't, I don't know any of the. Uh, background regarding Mr. Squares' relationship with his client or, um. Who we may have worked with and, and drafting the ordinance.
Well, originally, I originally asked him when this ordinance first came up, did he have any help from any, any. Mechanical engineers, any solar, any engineers, any groups? And I believe his, I'd have to go back and look at the stenographer's notes. The thing was, we have done this before for some place, I think he said West Warwick and some other municipalities.
So that, that is true, that, I'm sorry, Peter Squares on behalf of the, um, Tom and Cynthia Scoco. That is true, um, but, but I do distinctly remember that it was mentioned back when. It was originally common on this back in December, um, um, people asking about. This issue and I know.
Never, I never heard, once heard Hopkins Citizens Alliance, never. Never did I hear that, and if I do this, there probably would have been some differences along the way. Cause I specifically asked you, Counselor, if there was, are any groups involved in it, and you said no.
I, I don't, I have a very distinct and different recollection of that and.
Because for someone, because for someone to write something like this, they have to have some kind of municipal background. Solar background, mechanical.
Well.
Some kind of an environmental DM, you know, just Mr. and Mrs. off the street, just don't write something up and say, here you go.
So, uh, this is Counsel Moffett, I, I'm, I'm going to interject here, um, just, just for the record, you know. Attorney Squares, uh, does municipal law, he does write ordinances, um, and in other towns, you know. I've read other ordinances that his law firm has been.
Steve, there's a big difference between West Ward and Hopkinton, there's not too many farms in West Ward.
Of Kingstown? Who, who, what about South Kingstown? Would you say it's kind of comparable potentially with, I mean, South, South Kingstown is the largest. Uh, man mass town in, in the whole state.
I never, I never heard him in, say anything about South Kingston.
So I, I guess, so there is a, just to give some background, our firm represents six different. Rhode Island municipalities as their main solicitor. Um, we also serve as assistant solicitor to a number of other municipalities. Um, where the solicitors to South Kingston, Bristol, Barrington, West Greenwich. Um, and Bristol, Barrington, West Greenwich, South Kingston, East Greenwich. Um, and just recently, we became the solicitors for the city of Warwick.
Okay, I'm fine with that, but here it is, the eleventh hour, now we just find out that you've done multiple things. For municipalities and towns, not just when we started out, it was just West Warwick.
Well, Gary, what does that have to do with anything?
Nothing, it's, it's. I can get to my point, Mr. President, okay? This is some of the stuff that should have come out prior to not here at the end of it, and I'm going to stop here. As I want to go to public comment, Peter, uh, Attorney Squirt, thank you.
Um, this is Counsel Moffett, um, I'm, I'm going to make a comment, this was made very, very clear early on. Um, and I remember well, I, I, I remember reading it in the minutes. Um, I'm not looking for an end of the road kind of, got your moment, that's not what it is. Say that a citizen or a citizen's group in town cannot propose an ordinance, whether I'm for the ordinance or against the ordinance. They even want to silence the citizen to me is absolutely, I don't know, I mean, I, I, and I'm going to try to keep it. Uh, just a little calmer and I apologize for my, for my demeanor right now, um, but.
I'm not trying to silence anybody, but I want to let it to know that people of the town that, who is influencing this. That's all I'm saying, done with the subject, let's continue on.
So actually the subject was kind of hijacked, so we're going to go back to the presence of approval, that's what we were discussing. We, we were discussing as a council how we wanted to move on the presence of approval. I would like to share this kind of observation, so, so if we do not accept the. Um, uh, the presence of approval and like Attorney Squares in our own town, town solicitor said. It is, you know, typically a policy decision and you decide which way you want to go on it. That's how you're going to take a stand, that's how you're going to move forward and act as a town when it comes to these type of situations. So if we don't follow presence approval and we do, you know, with here in, uh, in section forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty-one. We are going to, we're, we're going to say that the town council is just going to make a zone change as they feel right. And then we're going to submit it to the planning board, okay?
That's not what it says.
All right.
Counsel President, Bob Marvel here, just want to add, add a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
I think that I tend to agree with our solicitor, uh, Attorney Seiple on the, the precedence of approval. Um, that is written in this proposal being, uh, the more, it makes more sense in here. And I think that really what, uh, the, the biggest thing for me that this does is it gives us. Checks and balances, uh, so that it, it requires approval of two bodies for this particular. Um, uh, case for, for solar projects for zone change, it requires both a planning board. Uh, approval and a town council approval, without those checks and balances, we're going to.
approval and a town council approval. Without those checks and balances, we're going to have, eventually, we're going to have one body or another overstep their, their authority. That's, that's my comment.
I think, can I speak?
Sure, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, I think if, if you do the precedence of approval, they have, the, the applicant will have to jump through hoops at the planning board level before it gets to the town council. Right now, they have to jump through hoops at the town council level before you, it, it, to me, this, I don't think you're going to get any better checks and balances. But I will say that if in fact, the policy has been in the past, that we have been operating under the zoning ordinance, forty-five, twenty-four, fifty-one, I would like to continue operating that way. But even if, if, if a project went to the precedence of approval to planning first and was all wonderful, and then it came to the town council, the town council could still vote no. So I just, I just, I don't know. I, I, I think we ought to continue the way we've been doing it. We, and, and I, unfortunately, it is only a recommendation from the planning board back to the town council, and the town council can make the ultimate decision. And I still think that's the, that is what is our duty. If the town council is the only one that can make a zoning ordinance change. So I can't say anymore. That's what we've been doing. And, and, and you know, maybe it's unfortunate that the councils in the past have never haven't always accepted the planning board's recommendations. But I still think that the zoning ordinance should take precedence over the, the planning land development one. Thank you.
Mr. President, Steve Seifel, Solicitor, the, the only thing I would add to my comments earlier about precedence of approval is that no matter which direction you go, it is the town council and only the town council that can approve a zone change. That, that power is not taken away from the council. The, the planning board cannot change the zone of a piece of property. No, regardless of which of these procedures you follow.
So I have a question. Does, does changing a zone, so if a, a an applicant is before you and the council changes the zone, does that give them a vesting? Are they vested in the project because of the zone change?
I cannot answer that. I think it would depend on quite a few factors. It would probably be a case by case sort of thing. It would depend on what is in the ordinance that the town council passed. I, I really couldn't comment on that. I, it would really be like, it would depend on each individual circumstance.
Right, because you know, I mean, it really seems as, I mean, and again, I mean, this is thinking out loud and, and it's talking, this is why we have discussions. This is why we, we don't just go through the motions and, you know, because it would just seem, you know, again, the council changes a zone, and yet they don't have the experience or expertise to kind of, kind of analyze these projects and kind of go through them and, and you know, you know, they're not really maybe trained or, or their talent isn't, you know, fleshing out the proper questions that need to be asked during a, which kind of seems like an important time in the process. Again, I, yes, Sharon.
That's the whole point of it going to the planning board for a recommendation. The planning board still can, even if it's not, you know, they can decide how deep they want to go before they make the recommendation back one way or the other. That's the whole point of them, of them being asked for a recommendation. And then when it comes back to the town council, then you have the hearing. So and, and you can get everybody's input, including the, the residents.
Council President Bob Marvel here. Just, I just want to ask a question. So hypothetically, if, if a project like this goes to the planning board and they do not get a favorable recommendation and then it goes to the town council for the zoning change, what, what check, what checks and balances do we have in this town to ensure that the town council will respect and defer to, maybe not defer to for the final decision, but at least consider that adverse recommendation in their consideration?
I have always considered it in my considerations. So it's really up to the people who are part of the council. But I have considered the planning board's recommendations or not in my, in my deliberation.
Councilman, I could just help to explain. I mean, the, the, the planning board really has two functions, and one is to review the application and to approve or deny the application. They review the plans and depending on what type of development and what type of application it is, the review can be different, but they have their power to review and approve or deny applications. And then they also have an advisory capacity to the town council, which is advisory only, but they do have the ability to approve or deny applications based on whether they comply with the planning regulations. And their decisions on, on that are appealable to the zoning board and then to the Superior Court. And then their advisory capacity to the town council is, is advisory only. So the council can make a decision that is contrary to the planning board's advisory opinion. And then if the council enacts a zoning ordinance, that would be appealable. And that would go to the Superior Court. And generally, the focus in the Superior Court on a appeal of a zoning ordinance is whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan or not. I hope that was clear enough, and if not, I can explain it again.
I have one, one, one more question. And it's, can you ask for a zone change without a project?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. Without even any questions of what you may intend to do or anything like that. I mean, it's, I'm sorry, kind of put you on the spot. I mean, if you want to kind of respond.
Well, sure. I mean, like, I mean, an, an application for a zone change could come in a variety of, of ways. I mean, it could come during the course of, you know, looking at the comprehensive plan and deciding that you want to change the classification of certain land. It can come from a developer who has a plan in mind. It could come from someone who's possibly looking to increase the value of their land. I mean, it's, there's a lot of, you know, they can be recommended by the government, they can be recommended by landowners or, or potential developers. There's, there's a lot of different ways that could come about.
Wouldn't that, Counsel, if we were going to do something like that, kind of like what Counselor Moffett is saying, say, all of a sudden, one day I wake up and say, hey, I want to do a zone change. That wouldn't really, that wouldn't really go into planning. That'd be more zoning zoning, doing a zoning change.
Well, I mean, it's, it's hard to answer that question, but like, it's, it's really hypothetical about what someone will be coming for, but and then you've also got an issue of spot zoning that you have to, to look out for. It's a lot different to, if you know, if your property is on the line between the commercial and residential zone, it's, it's a lot different than if it's like right in the middle of the residential zone. That could be, that can enter into the equation as well.
Okay, so after all this kind of discussion, debate or whatever, I would like to get a consensus on, on the presence of approval from the rest of the council here. Sharon says that she wants to strike it from the, from the proposed ordinance. Do we have any, any council members who are in agreement to strike this?
Does it kind of, Counselor Moffett, Counselor, does it fall with, does Sharon's, Sharon's thoughts fall the same? The, the, the town, does this town solicitor's thoughts fall the same as Sharon's? In other words, are Sharon's thoughts aligned with Steve Seifel's thoughts?
I would say that, I mean, Attorney Seifel has suggested that as, as a policy that the presence of approval in this particular situation would be, be the best. I mean, and it's not, I mean, I mean, he's not really, you know, I mean, he's here to give legal advice, you know what I mean? And not necessarily, you know, what, you know, policy. He's not here to set policies. He's here to give us legal advice. We can set policy.
So back to, so back to my question. Does, does his, his thoughts and Sharon's thoughts align? Or are they apart? Somewhere, I missed, somewhere in between, I missed the conversation.
I agree with what Mr. Moffett just said. I mean, if, if I was going to, I, I, this is a really difficult question to answer, given that there is litigation pending, and this is a question in the litigation that the town is facing right now. And I would prefer not to discuss that. But I, 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 there, I mean, Councilwoman Davis has one way of doing things that she would prefer and the applicant proposing the ordinance has, has suggested a different way. And I would suggest that the Supreme Court has not told us that you have to do it one way or the other. And, and I don't think it's my place to tell the council which decision to make.
So this, at, at, at the end of the day, to maybe help answer your question, Mike, I think it just comes down to a policy, policy idea as far as how you, how, how you want to pursue and, and how you want to handle it. But we have two options here. And I mean, if you're going to pick one or the other, I, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm assuming that you would need to be consistent with the language that you use, you know what I mean? And, and necessarily flip flop between the two.
Thank you, Counselor Moffett. Thank you, council listener.
Council President Bob Marvel?
Yes, Bob.
So I think I'll, I'll just chime in that I believe that we should keep the precedence of approval in the, the solar ordinance proposal. As this is specific to solar projects, it is a project, it is a development project. I believe that it makes sense to handle it that way with, with the precedence of approval.
I'm going to agree with Counsel Marvel, so I'm going to ask Counsel Hurst and Counsel Gary if, what their stance is, so we can put something on paper. Strike it from it and follow what Ben, Ben followed. I'd like to hear some thoughts potentially.
I basically, Counselor Hurst, I'm basically flexible, but I'm very interested in protect, protecting institutional prerogative of the town council. The planning board is a good resource, and I think we should, and I did multiple times support them in their recommendation on solar projects on the previous council, but the town council is elected, and we're accountable to the public. And the public, depending upon the mood of the electorate at any particular time and how many people run, it impacts decisions, but and I'm always interested in, you know, the legal aspects too, but as far as what Mr. Seifel said about the State Supreme Court, I mean, the thing that entered my mind, and I'm not a lawyer, but I was majored in political science, or I understand law, maybe not as much as a lawyer does, but I have some understanding of it, that after that decision is finally done, how is that going to impact all the decisions that have already been made in regard to whether it be solar or any other development type thing. So, but it's, it's best to realize the council is elected, is accountable to the people, and Rhode Island only has one elected planning board in, in Rhode Island, that's Charleston, a planning commission. So basically, we should use a planning board as a resource, but the council pretty much has to be accountable for the development in the town.
So you don't have a, you don't, you're not going to make a decision or anything? Okay.
Sounds like he's saying he wants to do the zoning ordinance one.
Okay.
He's supporting me, Steve, if you can.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Sharon.
I mean, I, you know, Counselman Hurst, again, I, I believe in the prior, prior prerogative of the town council to make decisions and
Thank you.
The thing is that, and I am flexible, but the, when you have a zoning law, usually that's, you have to follow it to a T. And any decision of the zoning board, if it ever went to the zoning board, has only appealed to the Superior Court. The planning board makes a recommendation to the council, and the planning board does have some power, certainly, but I, you know, as somebody that majored in political science, I believe every role in government has a function and and I don't think any, any body, whether it's the town council, the Congress, or the president, or whoever it is, should not, they should be very protective of their prerogatives. That's all. Thank you.
So Counsel Gary, we're looking for a consensus here.
That's a, that's a, that's a tough one to follow on that one. You know, every, every case is going to be different, right? We, I think we could all agree on that, whether be a zoning change or a project change or a project coming up like that. I kind of hear both sides of this, both sides. I understand what the town solicitor is saying. I understand what Counselor Moffett, Marvel is saying. I agree with that. But I kind of, kind of agree with Sharon on this one.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I mean, as much as, you know, again, this is a policy decision, and I mean, I'm not, you know, thrilled by it. But I mean, so Scott, I mean, instead of interpreting what you were saying, we, can we get either?
I, I can be flexible, but I'm going to support Sharon's position at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for making that known. I didn't want to assume what you were trying to say.
Well, you know, like I'm flexible because, you know, if you look at any argument, everybody can make a reasonable argument. But when you have something that can be interpreted different ways, but when you have something in the zoning laws of this town, and it's right there in black and white, and people can read it, and there's usually no ambiguous or less ambiguous statement of where you're going to go. And that's the difference between a zoning law, which I know can be interpreted, but it's less wiggle room for interpretation than making a planning decision, which is more of somebody's opinion.
Understood. Thank you, Scott. So Attorney Squares, it sounds like the consensus of the council for this particular section is that it should be removed.
Thank you, Council President. I will strike it from this draft.
So that being said, the next section, which is the inspection and enforcement five point three point six, is there any, any concerns about that? Mr. Lampier had touched on it earlier.
Fine.
Fine with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm fine with it as well. So as consensus, we're going to leave that right in there, Attorney Squares. So up next is Section five point five through five point seven, farm-based photovoltaic energy system. I have, I've submitted a a copy of my proposed amendments to this, things that I, that I would like to see in it. So I, I am going to start off with it. So what, what I am proposing is the original language. Um, I, I am going to start off with it. So what, what I am proposing is the original language that was in the Sculpco proposal. And it, what it does is it, um, it strikes out. Um, hold on, I, I just want to make sure I'm reading from the right thing here. Okay, so what it does is it. Pretty much strikes out all the language in, uh, 5.7 through. 5.5 through. 5.7. And it is replaced with A. And it says farm-based, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. 5.5 through 7, Farm-Based Photovoltaic Solar Energy System, PSES. And then letter A, intermediate and large farms, as the find herein, may install a solar energy system as an accessory use. Provided such accessory use would be in compliance with the requirement set forth in Table of Permitted Uses. In Section 5 of this ordinance and in compliance with all requirements in Section 5.3 of this ordinance pertaining to solar. Energy systems and. Yep, and that was the language that was in, in the original proposal. So, um, with that being said, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to read a statement, uh, to kind of give you, you know, possibly some, some insight as to. To why I feel this way about it. And so it's going to be a little bit of a statement here, um, uh, bear with me as I read it. So. The problem that I have with Chapter 247 of the Farm Viability Ordinance. Is the fact that it is painted with such a broad brush. That there's. Room for just, um. For the intentions of it to not be used properly. So this is going to be a little in that I read and I'm going to start off with describing two scenarios differently. The first scenario is a situation where there's a third, fourth, or even fifth generation farmer who has farmed the family land for generations. And they own over 50 acres and have obviously proven their intent and commit to farming. Or commitment to farming. The other situation you have is a person who just moved into town, bought a property of either 15 through 50 acres. And on this land, they want to build a house. I can see a scenario that plays out in which there is an opportunity to possibly clear enough land to sell enough wood to make enough money to qualify as an intermediate. And large farm by making $10,000 in one of the two previous years. This new farm would then be able to, by right, put two to three acres of commercial solar on this property. I do not think that this was the true intention of the ordinance when it was drafted in 2016. Just give the right to put up a commercial solar on as little as 15 acres was a huge mistake in my eyes. Also, according to, um, Harvey Buford in the email sent to me, he states that developers are typically paying farmers about $70,000 per acre upfront. And at $10,000 a year for the length of the lease. I will leave it up to Mr. Buford to correct the statement if that is not the case, or anyone else who would like to show that this is not the case. This would give a huge windfall to a farm that is only grossing. If you own 15 acres, $2,500 a year in the previous two years to qualify. That is over 28 years of minimum required income to qualify to have this right. Also, the tax revenue of the one to three acre solar site would be about $1,250 per, per year. Based on the state's, uh, $5 per kilowatt. Taxing. This doesn't seem like much when a person who owns a $300,000 home on an acre is paying $5,500 in taxes for that same acre in their home and. The 2016 Farm Viability Ordinance, Chapter 247 Amendment Edition, it's painted with too broad of a brush for me, and until it is corrected. To use a much finer brush, then I cannot support it as it is written. I do not consider what I am proposing to be pulling the rug out from under the farmer, but rather encouraging them to come up with ways to tighten this language to ensure that is not misused. I am sure that there are more taxpayers that would agree with me than who would disagree. Some, something doesn't sit well with me when a large farm with generations of hard work and commitment to farming would be in the same class as this newfound farm. That has the ability to put up two to three acres of commercial solar and have the potential and have potentially no commitment to farm. And that there is no language that protects against this other than for penalties. From withdrawing and those penalties are dwarfed by any potential income. The income that Mr. Buford described, the Farm Viability Ordinance is literally a half page just inserted into the Farm Viability Ordinance. Um, Mr. Buford had shared that there are over a hundred or so properties that have farm. Forest and open space designation. I have a sheet that I'm looking at. That has 63 properties that are listed as forestry and 30 as farm. I choose these because they are all over 15 acres. The minimum of what is required to qualify based on Chapter 247 of the Farm Viability Ordinance. After 247 of the Farm Viability Ordinance allowed recently the approval of a two acre solar array to the owner of a property that was 25 acres enlisted as forestry. And earned $10,000. We cannot leave Chapter 247 of the Farm Viability Ordinance untouched. Because I feel the true spirit is not being followed. Although my view may not be popular with. With some, it does not make it wrong or against farmers. It is about the lack of clarity surrounding the Farm Viability Ordinance in Chapter 240. Six or seven, I'm sorry, if I, I apologize for messing that up.
Forty-seven was the last revision.
Forty-seven, so, so thank you. I must have misprinted here. There needs to be a better farm viability ordinance on solar, whether it offers increased capacity as an accessory use. Or would allow commercial solar on farms at a smaller scale. I do not, do I know the absolute answer is? No, I do not. I do not believe that it's fair for other landowners. That are right like this is just given to anyone, anyone who wants to be a farmer and this is not. I, I am not using bad words towards the farmers. I, I absolutely appreciate it. I just want some. Some titans of it, and I think a fair-minded person would agree. And to use the bare minimum requirement to also be the landlord of a solar developer. I would also like to mention that farmers are not the only ones who are struggling and would benefit from extra, extra income from solar. Who owns 15 acres or more. It is not, it is not without much thought that I am proposing to keep the language. That is in the proposed amendment to the town solar ordinance, ordinance submitted by Dr. Thomas and Cynthia Sculpco. Allows for farmers who have ground mounted accessory solar. Farmers' costs offset. There are many reasons as, as to why I agree with this path. And one is I want to stay consistent with the zoning for solar that we are currently proposing, which does not allow for commercial solar in any other area. In contaminated sites that are zoned commercially. Two. Two, um, there are many loopholes and not enough language to guarantee that the true intention of the addition of Chapter 247 amendment to the Farm Viability Orient. The 247 has been in the Farm Viability Orange for five years now and eight farms have taken advantage of it. The door has been open for five years. There are many residents who could use the same benefits but are not allowed to. And they too may be struggling to keep the family land and not want to sell it or be able to leave it to their heirs. And also to end, I did not hear from one person when I was running for town council, who was for commercial solar arrays, not one. So this is kind of some of, some of my thought process that, uh, to bring to the discussion, and I am looking forward to hearing, um. Anybody else's.
Yep, Council Moffett, Council, nope, go ahead, Council Hurst.
I, I was gonna, I, I was going to yield to him, just let me say this. Every, every community has a culture. And we have a farmland culture in Hopkins, which goes back centuries. And, uh, it's very important. We have a dairy farm. There's not many dairy farms left in Rhode Island. We get about just Hopkins. And it's, it's, it's a way of life. And the big question is, is what do you do to encourage? Uh, an activity which is really diminished greatly. In fact, it's on the verge of extinction. It's not only a question of being eliminated. And the bottom line is this. Farmers serve a purpose because. You can't save all the land in town, but. Housing developments, uh, consume a lot of, uh. Tax dollars because the children have to be educated and I'm not, I'm not against educating children, but. That's one of the things that the benefit of encouraging. Farmland preservation. And also what people don't seem to understand is the economics of agriculture. And I've been around agriculture all my life. My, my mother's side of the family has been involved in, in agriculture. Uh, in North Spines in Connecticut, just over the line in Clocks Falls. I don't know what they're doing now, but, so I've been around agriculture all my life and the thing is that it's very important. Uh, a lot of times we, you know, we talk about. You know, solar on farms, well, we've got to understand that a lot of farmers are not only struggling, but they have to engage in other activities. Uh, could, they might sell gravel, they might have a gravel bag, or they might sell wood. Or some other activity to supplement their farming because you don't make really a lot of money in farming. And I'd just like to, uh. Note that I did, uh, a tremendous email I got from, uh. The Lucas, uh, Marsh. Lucas Marsh, whose father actually graduated from high school with me and, and Gary, Gary Marsh is a member of our Conservation Commission. Uh, and he, he supplements his income by being a cabinet maker, so it's very important to. To encourage agriculture in this, uh, this town and it's just, uh. Just like the Reynolds farm up in Ho Valley that has a little bit of solar. Uh, up there and, and that's not a working farm anymore, uh. Doesn't have cows anymore, so it's very important to protect what we have. Uh, as far as agriculture goes and if, uh, there's some abuse, uh, we could always, uh, maybe tighten the thing up, but I. I really think that, uh, we should think very hard about changing the farmland viability ordinance unless we really have some strong. Reasons. I can understand that somebody might just come in and, and take advantage of it, uh. But there could be like, uh, penalties like they do with, uh. Fo- uh, forest. I know that people can get a benefit and if they get out early, they have to pay a penalty or there's a penalty for it. We could probably work something along that lines, but. You have certain farmers in town, uh. And, uh. Like the Mosh, uh, formerly the Kenyans, uh, Ricky Kenyon is a fallen law with long time farmer in town. And any other, uh, people that engaged in agriculture in town on whatever level it is, so. I'm, I think we should protect our agricultural heritage and, uh. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. And I'd like to hear it because I know at least one of the Mosh student wants to talk and I hope we let them speak. Thank you.
Council Moffett, Council Gary.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, the Farm Viability Act needs, totally needs to come off on this, off this, uh, application. Back in January, we all had a discussion about, does the Farm Viability Act really belong on here? And the consensus was it doesn't. And I think the, the thing that came up was big solar was the problem, not farm solar. Okay? So there's been a lot of mistruths put out on forms. On how things go. Do I agree with Council Hurst? There are some things that probably need to be tightened up in 246 and in 247. But the Farm Viability Act does not belong on here. That's all I'm going to say. I'd like to hear about, definitely like to get to the public section after the other counselors talk.
Is, um, so, um, I just kind of, oh, Mike, I, 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 I just want to clear this up a little bit, um. You mean like come off, like, like. Like, because it's part of the. So you're saying it shouldn't be touched? Is that what you're saying?
No, the Farm Viability Act shouldn't be on, shouldn't be even included in this application. Farm viability is something else. We're talking two different.
Right, but it's, but it's, um.
Hold on, we're talking solar, then we're talking little soul over here for farms. Shouldn't even be part of this application? Do we want to go back and maybe talk about Chapter 246, 247, the Farm Viability Act? Sure, I'd, I'd really like to sit down with everybody. Counselor Hurst, some of the people that helped write, write it and go from there, but this, this just does not belong in this application.
So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna kind of, just kind of rebut on that. That's why. You know, I, I was a big proponent for the ground mounted solar. I know some of the argument before was, you know, the way it was proposed that we weren't going to allow any type of ground mounted solar on farms. Um, and part of that was in my thinking that, you know, it, it would be kind of a natural place for, you know, for accessory. So, I mean, this is a solar ordinance. We are talking about solar. And so I think it, it does belong in this discussion. Do I believe, like I said in my statement, that there. Are loose ends and there are some things that need to be done. And I think in the presence of proper language. To guarantee that that is blocked, that it needs to be changed to what I've proposed until. You know, there's a meeting of the minds in, and from all aspects and, and from all angles and a new discussion is had referencing to 47.
Well, we can, we can sit down and have that discussion anytime with Harvey Buford.
Right, because I mean, you, I mean, we've, yeah, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I said, we can sit down and have that discussion on Chapter 246, 247, but I'll be damned if I'm going to let farms fall with this. Okay, this is the last, this is the, look around, Steve.
I'm not picking on the big farms there, Mike. I mean, that's, that's not my goal. My goal is to, is to tighten it up. I mean.
I'm on, I'm on board with you, but it does.
So in the meantime, I think it needs to be changed, that, that language, because that is part of the ordinance, that it's something that the following. If we ignore it at this point, right? What, what guarantees are there that there's going to be any discussion or anybody's going to want to come to the table? They can say it, but I think that. We need to change the language in it right now.
No.
To accessory and then. You'll potentially open up the argument for it, against it and all that. I mean, I just, it, it's just too, you know. A, a, and again, I mean, it's been around for five years. I mean, people have had their opportunities. I mean, to do it, I just. I, I mean, and you may not want to comment on it, but, you know, back in December when that two acre was on forestry, I mean, that's, we are still leaving language open. For potentially having that. I have a list here, right, of, 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 like I said, there's. 63 properties in the forestry and 30 in the farm. So you're saying to leave that language that we are potentially opening up the floodgates? And again, you know, I, I'm not saying every one of them is going to do it, but there's 93 opportunities to completely. You know, get in while the, you know, the getting's good potentially. And, and I don't use that, you know, lightly. I'm just saying, I just think. You know, a reasonable person would understand that what I have, you know, and, and again, you can disagree with me that, um. Yeah, I, I just think we need. To change it to accessory and then potentially have the opportunity. Sit down and correct some things about it. I, I think you would have more people on board with that. And I implore, you know, you, Scott, you know what I mean, to, to come up with some ideas to, you know, to, to tighten it up, to, to make it less, you know. You know, in, um, and more true to the actual intentions of viability, because. We don't, I mean, it, I mean, you can say, say these things, but I mean. Show me, you know, also where is, is making it viable. You know what I mean? It's.
All right, Steve, I, but Steve, I agree to disagree with you. I don't want to sit here and beat this up all night. I'd rather get to hear what the council say. I'd rather get to public comment.
All right, all right. We, we can have that discussion another day. Sharon, do you have any comments or do you want to add, um, you know, a consensus, which, which way you're feeling about this? It means yes, no, explanation?
The reason, um, I think that it needs to be. Uh, addressed a little bit now is that if we don't have it as part of this ordinance. Um. The regular PSE, the old, the older PSES farm viability, whatever, makes refer, makes reference to the PSES ordinance. And so something's got to change in the farm. Viability ordinance so that it is coordinated with this one, this zoning ordinance. Because the PSES will not exist anymore, so you do have to change the language of the farm. Viability ordinance a little bit. That was. You know, why I thought it should be brought up again, um. My, my problem is that it was very disturbing to find that it only takes $2,500 worth of, of income. To qualify. I just, I, it just really shocked me. Um, then it, you're not really, um, making the farm viable because the farm isn't viable. I mean, period. Um, then it, you're not really, um, making the farm viable because the farm isn't viable. I mean, period. I, is, are they really farms or are they, um, hobbies? If you're only making twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, so I, are they really farms anymore? That's my question.
Then your answer is yes. Counselor Gary.
My answer is, well, my answer is that I think Steve's suggestion is a good one at this point. It kind of ties everything together and I am open to, to revisiting uh, a separate farm viability ordinance in the future or whatever. But I just, I, I, at this point, I, I agree with Steve.
Uh, Counselor Hurst, you know, you can still come up, if you're really concerned about maintaining, you know, the status quo, um, the lawyer can come up with the language to, to make, make that happen. But I'm, the, the whole problem with this whole ordinance, and I, I agreed to sponsor it so it could get on the table, is the fact that we're, we're doing a lot. We've had a lot of meetings on a very serious subject and, uh, we're just taking the whole hog, if you will. We, uh, I was on the previous council and Counselor Davis was on that council and we both voted in January twenty nineteen, a very restrictive, uh, solar ordinance. Uh, and that was pretty, that was quite a statement by the previous council. And now we're even talking about even a more restrictive type situation with this new ordinance that's being worked on now. But I do, I do want to hear what the public has to say. But I mean, I know of no other town, at least in our local area, has tackled solar like Hopkinen has. I don't think Westerly has. I don't think Richmond has, Charleston or, or any of these other towns. Uh, maybe they have and I just didn't pick up on it, but uh, nobody's been more, uh, just talked solar as much as Hopkinen has. But, but, you know, let's, let's get to what the public has to say. We can always talk, but, uh, we're holding up some of our citizens who want to talk and, and the ones that are farmers have to get up and milk the cows in the morning. So I hope we give them some consideration. Thank you.
Scott, this is Counselor Moffett. We will give them time. If, if I need to extend it past ten o'clock, we're going to extend it past ten o'clock. Okay? Um, I mean, we, I mean, it, I mean, I know you want to skirt right through to the public comment, but I, I, I think we need to have a discussion. So, uh, Counselor, uh, Marvel, uh, you have a, a consensus, um, either way?
Yeah, Bob Marvel here. Um, I, I've gone back and forth and, uh, on this in my mind, uh, about a million times. Um, but I think, you know, the, the point that keeps coming back to me is we went through this whole exercise and ended up very deliberately on the, on the land use table denying, uh, for-profit solar operations in all of our zones. And except for, you know, contaminated zones in a very restricted way. And I think that to, to allow the farm viability, chapter two forty-seven to stand as it is, um, I, I just, I have to agree with Steve that we're, we're still leaving the back door open for developers to come in and take advantage of, um, you know, situations and, and really in some ways in my mind, take advantage of, of farmers by, by offering them a lot of money uh, to be able to do a solar project that they stand to, to also gain from. I, I guess I would have to, in the end, agree with what Steve is saying. I think we should force the issue and force the discussion on having a separate discussion about the farm viability and let's, let's have that discussion in a detailed manner and, and make it better for farmers as a separate, uh, a separate entity than, than this. And, and let's, let's, you know, finish up this solar, solar ordinance so that we can move on for that. So that, that's, that's my comment.
Counsel, Counsel Marvel, Counsel Gary. Counsel Marvel, are you for, are you, just general question, are you for farmers for having solar or not?
I am for assisting farmers in any way they, they can. But I, I don't think that the current chapter two forty-seven is, is a, is a good one as it stands. I think it's, uh, I think it's too, um, uh, we're on the word I want to say. It's too broad right now. It's, it's not specific enough.
Uh, you know, Counselor Hurst, and like I, my fa, my mother was a farmer's daughter and I'm around farmers all my life. Uh, but the question really is, is farmers are in a different situation because it's not like if you're an engineer or you work an electric boat and you go and you're always going to get paid. A farmer has to deal with the weather, the market, all these other things. And you might have a bad year or a good year depending upon what the situation is. And farmers keep land undeveloped. And they serve a useful purpose that benefits society at large. And they also add to the culture and the ambience of Hopkins and Rhode Island and a lot of the smaller towns in Rhode Island. So that is not fully appreciated. I can understand there could be some tweaking, but, uh, and I know that some people might abuse it, uh, because they don't make a lot of money on farming, but, uh, uh, it's very important that we really look at where we're going as far as protecting agricultural heritage of Hopkinton. And, uh, a lot of the smaller towns are having development pressures and it's something that we should be concerned about. And what is your alternative to help the, the farmers? Like I've pointed out, uh, Lucas Marsh is a cabinet maker to help him sustain himself. Uh, some farmers sell gravel, some people sell wood, they have some other job and they keep into farming. It's, uh, uh, farming is, is not like another type of job. It's, uh, you have so much going against you, whether it's the weather and, uh, things of that nature. And, uh, I think we should really reflect on that. Thank you.
This is Counselor Moffett. Um, hold on.
Steve, unmute yourself.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep, here you now.
Yeah.
Okay, um, if you're listening to us correctly, Sharon, Bob and myself, we are not closing the door on anything. I mean, I know, you know, you're in a mindset that, you know, potentially we're, we're trying to close this door, that we're not, we're not listening. What we ultimately want to do is protect farms and open up the door for a better discussion on how we can better do it with a better farm viability ordinance that's on solar. And I mean, I, I don't know how to say it a, a, any other way, but I think, um, and it, an honest and fair person would agree to sit down and have this discussion and go over it. We are not saying that, you know, heck with you, nope, we're going to push this through and we don't want to have any other, any other potential discussion on this. We don't want to fix anything else. No, that is not what we're saying. We're not in that court. What we're saying as town council members that we serve all of the people in Hopkinton. We need to make sure that we are covering all of our bases, including farmers, and making sure that things are done right, you know? It is kind of a shame that someone could possibly go out there and misuse it and give, you know, a farmer with a large piece of property, you know, multiple generations of, of managing a farm, you know, pass them in a bad light, you know? It kind of slightly, in my opinion, gives, you know, those, those, you know, larger farmers, you know, who, who have been doing it for years, a bad need, you know? Or I, it, it just puts them in a bad situation, you know? So I think by cleaning it up and, you know, finding, you know, the best possible solution, I think a reasonable person would agree with that. And that's kind of where I, I want to stand. It looks like we have a consensus as far as how we want to put this down. Um, but I, like you, would, would like to hear from the public, so.
Uh, Counselor Hurst again, and I just want to say one thing because I do want to get to the public. We have a Conservation Commission in this town. And, uh, okay, Mr. Marsh, Gary Marsh is on that committee, but, uh, and we should be having that farm land viability ordinance, send it to the Conservation Commission and ask them for any suggestion. That's putting it before a group that's interested in conservation of this town and land use issues from, from that perspective. And, uh, I think that's what we should be doing. We should, we should use them as a resource to, uh, to get their perspective. A lot of times, uh, because I know they have more of a former role in development issues, the zoning board and the planning board, but this is a time that, uh, we could really use some input from the Conservation Commission and their perspective and, uh, give them something to do and something in which, uh, uh, could be really beneficial for the town and, and where we're going, uh, into the future is, is a town that had a long agricultural history. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And, and I would just like to add that, that, that would be a good direction to have the Conservation Commission involved. Absolutely. I also remind you that the Conservation Commission is the one who wrote or sponsored the last, um, uh, chapter two forty-seven. So, um, with that consensus there, um, Mr. Squares, if you could, um, put in the original proposal language for the, um, section five point five through seven.
I will do that, Mr. President.
And then, um, if there's any other comment, I would like to open it up to the, uh, to the public. Are there any objections? Or is, is anybody else having to say at this moment or are we?
Sounds good, Mr. President. Uh, I'll look for him.
Excellent. Okay, so we're going to start off here. Um, if your phone number ends in nine, five, nine, three, um, star six to unmute, please. And then state your name for the record, please.
Carolyn Light, Forest Glen Drive, Hope Valley. Um, just for some clarification on the, uh, income requirements for the farms, this is actually a number that's set by the state of Rhode Island. The twenty-five hundred dollars a year um, is a number that was selected by them. So it wasn't something that Hopkington did, and I also don't think it's something that Hopking, Hopkington can do much about. Uh, because that number is set by the state. Um, is it additional information out there? If you'd like, I could bring it forward to you. And the other comment that I wanted to make is that one of the, uh, things I'm passionate about is transparency in our government and from a planning board's perspective. Uh, I, I recall meeting, um, Attorney Squirts earlier this year because he was representing the Skulkos um, as a butters to a very large solar application, a commercial application. Um, that was the first introduction and that was the formal introduction. And then Mr. Squirts showed up representing the Skulkos with this, uh, new ordinance for our solar projects. And I think he was supported and encouraged by the Hopkington Citizens Alliance. And I'm sure there's at least one member of that group on the line that can confirm all of that. But I, I recall asking, you know, bringing that information forward and it might have been at a planning board meeting. So, Mr. Gary, I, I support your interest in wanting to know what the full loop is. And there is that relationship. And at least that's what it looks like from where I sit as a planning board member. And, Mr. Moffett, I don't think there's anything wrong with our community knowing that these, these organizations and people have these relationships. So I think you might see Mr. Squirts again come forward, uh, with other solar projects that, uh, come before the town too. Um, I'm, I'm grateful that he brought his insight to the table to us because our ordinance, a lot of hard work went in, went into it twice. And this is the third time. Uh, I, I think, um, you guys are getting close to something that you're going to feel comfortable with. And the residents are going to enjoy the benefits of the hard work you're putting into it now. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for taking me, my call.
Hey, Carol.
Mr. Mr. President, if I could just read with, uh, Peter Squares on behalf of Tom and Cynthia Skolko. Um, so I, I did, um, uh, go back and take a look at the minutes from the December fourteenth meeting. And, uh, I believe Ms. Light did ask a similar question at that council meeting. And, and this, that was brought up at the, uh, beginning of the, uh, December fourteenth meeting that the Skulkos, you know, do a but, a large, uh, proposal that was made in town. Um, and that they had, um, um, shared material and, and discussed matters with the Hopkins Citizen Citizens Alliance members from that. Um, but just to be entirely clear, and of course, any, any question that anyone has, has on that point, I'm happy to answer it. Um, but to be entirely clear, I only represent the Tom and Cynthia Skolko. Um, I do not represent any person from the Hopkinton Citizens Alliance and, uh, anything that, any statement put out by that group or any member of that group, um, is not on behalf of the Skulkos or myself.
Thank you, Mrs. Squares. Um, up next, um, it is, uh, Debbie O'Leary. Debbie, uh, could you please state your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Deborah O'Leary. Uh, forty-four Pleasant View Drive. I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission. I'd like to talk on behalf of the Conservation Commission and the ordinance, the farm viability ordinance. We, when we put this together, it was not just a bunch of us or even just a few farmers sitting around a table. We had members, we had also members of DEM present at our workshops as we walked through this, as we talked about it. The reason why accessory use for farms is not adequate is that most farmers cannot afford the equipment. Now, maybe they could rent it, but that's still an added expense. And what the one, two or three acres of what you call commercial solar, I call it a mini commercial solar, does for them. It is a source of income which does not require physical labor or distractions from their farm duties. And that was the reason we did this. If you want to do more for our farmers, if you want to take the whole ordinance and redo it later, fine. But this piece was not put in idly. It was not put in without great thought and consideration. And I think that we've had one bad solar project that, as you say, well, these are people who are, who are farming trees, not, not farming crops. And we had one. And I know that we have sent you suggestions on how to tighten up the language in that section. And we have heard nothing but crickets from you. I'm very disappointed in all of you as far as thinking it's okay to just take this out without putting something viable in its place. Thank you.
Up next, um, here we. If your phone number ends in one, four, nine, four, um, star six to unmute yourself and please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Just, just, just be saying your name on the record, thank you.
This is Lynn Gary, sixteen Tom Mclog Road, Simplicity Farms. I just have a few comments to make and then a question at the end. There's been so many myths and confusion and really downright lies about farms and farm solar. Many people confuse RF R eighty zoned land with the working farms in Hopkinton. So you think we just have to claim twenty five hundred dollars a year and call ourselves a farm? We do a lot of work registering with the state of Rhode Island, some of us with the USDA, the Health Department. We go through the application process, we follow strict guidelines, we make conservation plans to better our community with the NRCS. And we are subject to inspection every five years to confirm with the Rhode Island agriculture that we are a working farm. Another myth is that farm solar is responsible for the sprawling solar that is ruining our rural town. Because the fact is, Hopkinton has the strictest solar on farms probably in the state. You can own up to two hundred and fifty acres of farmland and follow strict conservation, which benefits our town. And you are only allowed up to three acres of solar on that farm. People like to compare farm solar with what happened on Maxon Hill. But the truth about Maxon Hill is that's a hundred and thirty eight acres of land that was rezoned. With fifty acres of solar, if that piece of land was a farm and had to follow our strict farm viability ordinance. Only three acres would have been allowed on that land, which would be such a small disturbance to the abutting houses compared to what is there now. Farms did not get a huge financial windfall for our one acre of solar. I know there's been so many myths about how much money we're making from our solar farms. And what this does for viability for our farm. I can tell you, we deal with one bad year from animals, droughts, floods. And that farm money that we get from solar might be the only money we have to pay for equipment loans that we have to pay for. Or animals that still need to be fed in the months that the farm is not producing a profit. That is how solar contributes to farm viability. There continues to be a myth that you can just become a farmer, get solar, and then stop farming with no penalty. It doesn't take an accountant to figure out if you have two hundred acres. That you are getting a tax discount for being a working farm. And you stop farming, that ten percent penalty per year for ten years you have to pay. There's no way your solar payment every year would cover those penalties. So I'm a little disappointed that the town council so quickly disregards the work we put into. Workshop after workshop, working with DEM, learning about solar, what solar does to our land. How we can farm around solar and with solar. For examples, we let our chickens feed all around our solar panel, we work with our solar. We are not the eyesore of solar that has infiltrated this town. Look at Maxon Hill, look at Route ninety one, that's the problem. I get nothing but positive feedback from my customers, how I plant my crops around my solar. And I let my chickens feed around my solar and it has become a part of my farm. My question is to the town council, with all the new strict rules that you are putting around solar. Rhode Island DEM Farm Energy Program, the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resource, and the USDA Department of Agriculture. I have checked into grants for farmers to install install accessory solar panels. To go green with the energy I use on my farm. If you go forward with the strict rules for farms to follow your new rules. Do we as farmers follow the guidelines by the state or federal government? Or do we have to follow the rules of the town as far as where our solar panels can go? How big it can be, what color it is? Do we need costly permits? Do we need to have engineers? And do we need to have landscape engineers to disguise it from any abutting houses? Would that be a call from the state and the federal government or from the town? Thank you.
I will answer as far as, I mean, ground mounted solar accessory, there's there's language in the in in the ordinance that states. What the regulations are for ground mounted, the 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 original proposed amendment, and I have ground mounted solar in it. I I pushed to have it put in there, and it has been put in there, so there are guidelines. As far as ground mounted solar, accessory solar goes, so. I would assume, I mean, local ordinance, you're gonna have to follow local ordinance. Um, I'm not sure if Attorney Squares could maybe answer that, or I mean.
Sorry about that. I I think I I dropped just for a minute, what was the?
No, the question was 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 regarding would farmers have to, you know, with accessory solar, ground mounted solar, follow, you know, the state rules or. USDA guidelines or or local rules? And I suggested that we have um uh rules and regulations for ground mounted solar in town here for accessory uses. And it states right in the proposed ordinance here for intermediate and large farms. It says, provided such accessory use would be in compliance with the requirement set forth in Table permitted uses in section five of this ordinance. And in compliance with all requirements in section five point three. So those are the sections that I would suggest that she looked at for any answers regarding ground mounted accessory solar.
Right, right. So I think the language that there was a consensus on right before the public hearing. That would just require that the accessory complied with the same requirements that would apply to any property owner, residential property owner.
Okay, um, up next. Go, um, star six to unmute yourself and please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau from Old Depot Road. And I just have a couple of comments, and I want to save my comments about the the true farmers for the end. Uh, I want to thank you for putting in the work schedule of eight to five, Monday through Friday, and no weekends. I was at Maxon Hill several mornings. One morning I was there at six thirty in the morning, and about ten minutes later, a fuel truck shows up. And starts fueling all of their heavy equipment with the constant noise. I was there on a Sunday where they had three out of state electrical contractors working there. So I think that's going to make a big difference. Another suggestion I have is that um there should be something in our ordinance. That allows the town to be notified when a particular plant starts generating power. And I know I've spoken to the town planner, and there's some issues between National Grid and the developer. I also spoke to zoning, I I spoke to several people in our town, and no one is notified when a project is generating power. I spoke to Liz Monte, and she was a tax assessor. She was telling me that one New Year's Eve, she went to a particular solar project to hear if she could see. See if she could hear any noise that it was generating power, and that was for tax purposes. So I think it's important that we know when this happens. Sixty five Palmer Circle started generating power on December thirty first, two thousand and nineteen. They have yet to plant one tree, one shrub, nothing to buffer that property. I was there on Saturday, and between Saturday morning and Sunday morning, someone cut a hole into the fence to gain access. About three feet in diameter. I reported it to the police, I reported it to the landowner, and I reported it to Pine Gate. And when I went there this morning, there was forty foot opening of fence that was down on the ground. Any child could get in there, I did not feel comfortable leaving that. I called the police, I was told by the police that I suggested that maybe DPW could put up a fence. And I was told it's private property, that they could not do anything with that. I did not want to leave a forty foot gap when you have several signs of warning about high voltage. All we have to do is have a problem with a child or some adult going in there and having a a serious problem. I saw the land, an abutting landowner, I spoke to Gary about it. And it was more disturbing because he told me that the workers intentionally cut that fence. Uh, and took the fence down so they could get in there to work. And um they've had occasions where our town planner and crossman engineers have showed up for a meeting, and they would never show up. The gate's been unlocked. There needs to, my, the bottom line with this topic is there needs to be some control in our solar ordinance to stop these things from happening. Can you imagine walking away from a forty foot opening in that solar panel and something happens? It's just, in my opinion, that's not the right way to do it. I just want to clarify something. I was one of the founding members of the Hopkinton Citizens for Responsible Planning. And that started either in July or August of two thousand and eighteen. Near the end of two thousand and nineteen, it was changed to the Hopkinton Citizens Alliance. I would often go to that website, and I recently went there looking for some information. And I could not get onto the homepage. Uh, all I could see was all the different solar projects with the different specs on solar projects currently. And finally, I found the page, and the page said that the uh, it was dissolved by a vote on February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. I text two members of that group, one responded, I had not heard from the second. Person that responded said that it just didn't work out the way that they wanted it to, so they they just disbanded it. As far as the farmers, I agree with the Gary Marshes, Mrs. Gary. I believe that we should do more for the true farmers, and I use the words true farmers. I've listened to a hearing for a particular project that's for the farm viability. And the first thing I Google was the definition of agriculture. And when you do that, there are no chickens involved in this project, it's it's something entirely different. And I agree with what the what Steve and other people were saying, and I think Counselor Gary mentioned it. There are some things in the ordinance that need to be tightened up, and I agree with that. Um, because there will be the isolated few people that will take advantage. But again, let's try to help the true farmers in our town. And again, I appreciate what you guys are doing with this PSES, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Up next. Joanna, just can you state your name for the record, please?
Hi, town council members, my name is Johanna Marsh, and my family owns Elmrock Farm here at Nashway, Rhode Island. Um, if you don't know, it's one of the last dairy farms in the state of Rhode Island. There are only seven, and we are one of them. This farm has been in my family since the eighteen hundreds. And the reason I'd like to speak tonight is because I'm here to strongly urge you to keep small solar arrays in the farm viability ordinance. Normally, this is not my thing, and I'm a little nervous, so please bear with me. But I feel very compelled to address you tonight after learning that my family was used as a case study in a letter that was sent to the town council. Um, from a person who has no idea what farming is like or what it entails. It also makes me question the town council when I feel like they're appeasing this individual or group so that they don't get sued. One of the points in this letter was that my family or farmers can't claim that taxes are a burden. And made it seem like you're liars and greedy. I'm here to tell you our truth. In farming, there's very little money, especially now with this economic climate. Plus, we are competing against large factory farms that have economies of scale and low operational cost. Our small farm doesn't make enough money for operating costs. The milk check doesn't cover what it costs to feed the cows, let alone cover equipment, upkeep, vet bills, et cetera. So yes, even with tax rates, taxes are a burden. Both my parents, brother and I have jobs off of the farm to help. I think it's common knowledge and can be checked out, we're usually on the tax sale list. For us to pay taxes, it is a scramble on how it can be done. So yes, I can stand here confidently and say taxes in this town are a burden for this small farm. I can also say that the small solar arrays is what is saving my farm, Elmrock Farm. With this, it helps pay for taxes and operational costs. Elmrock Farm is two hundred and fifty two acres. We are not asking to have fields of solar, we're asking for a total of three acres. That's just a little over one percent of our total land. Having these solar arrays on only three acres of land gives us enough to keep our farming, keep on farming. Our goal is for the next generation to be able to farm. We desperately need a new barn, and solar will help pay for this. I also want to point out that once these leases are over, we can take back our land and we can farm it. This is so crucial, and it's a win-win situation. It's actually conserving our fam farmland. Lastly, I want to leave you with this. Over the years, my family has saved this town millions of tax dollars by not developing the land. And trust me, my grandfather and parents have had offers to sell, but they always turned them down. If the town council removes small solar from the farm belt viability ordinance, the future of Elmrock Farm is not good. I, along with my siblings, are the next generation, we are the future. We would like to continue farming, but if this town and community can't support farms, then you will be forcing us to sell. Every day, we are on the verge of shutting down. We need some sort of lifeline. Taking away the solar from the farm viability ordinance will mean we will have to start looking at developers. This is not a threat, it's just facts, it's reality, it's a business. We won't be able to continue on farming. Imagine, we own two hundred and fifty two acres, how many houses could fit on these acres? How high will your taxes go when Elmrock Farm is developed for houses? Do your constituents, the people that voted you in, want to pay thousands of dollars in more taxes when Elmrock Farm is developed? So I hope the town council and community members see the value of having farms in town. And how the small solar arrays help keep these farms running. Please, I am appealing to you, town council members, don't get us into a position where we have to sell our farm. Please, don't make us or don't force us to sell. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Up next. Gail, you are unmuted, just state your name for the record, please. Hi, Gail, the floor is yours, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Unmute, yes, hi, I'm Gail Torcenta, All Source Power on Fenner Hill. And um back in February twenty twenty, I purchased a seven acre manufacturing zoned property. With the intent of erecting a commercial building along with installing. A photovoltaic solar energy system. This was a Hopkinton permitted use at the time. Now you are proposing to eliminate that option. This permitted use was a major reason why I purchased the manufacturing property. Manufacturing property is not the cause of the solar problems we are seeing in in Hopkinton today. Rezoning is, and I should not be denied the opportunity to add a PSES system. I am being penalized for excessive solar development in town on properties that were not manufacturing. This is unconscionable. You are taking a right away from me, my company, perhaps taking in law, as someone mentioned earlier, as a concern. My company, Power Resources, has been a bit in business in Hopkinton for thirty two years. I employ people in the community, and we are moving into solar servicing. Uh, in our business, and it is critical that I have a solar system on the property. So what am I to do? If this ordinance is enacted, do I sell? Move my company elsewhere after thirty two years? Contaminate my property? You are taking revenue out of my pocket, and what are you giving me in? You are taking revenue out of my pocket and what are you giving me in return? This is an outrage. Thank you.
Can I, do I have a motion to potentially extend us another 15 minutes till, say, 10:15 to, to, to make sure everybody in, in the forum is heard?
Mr. President, Bob Marvel here. I, I so moved.
Darren Davis, I second.
All in favor?
I, first I.
Moffett, I?
Davis, I.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Right, up next. Eric, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, it's Eric Bibbler. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Eric Bibbler on Woodville Road. Um, a lot of good comments tonight. I think a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of issues were raised that I don't think are particularly germane to the meeting, which I'd be willing to address at another time if, if you wish. I just want to say a few things about the farm viability ordinance and take a step back and look at the big picture. It's, I support eliminating the chapter 247 or rewriting it so that it allows accessory use only. I would also, as I've said before, I would support a process. I would like to do that right now. I'll tell you why. And the reason is because as some of the counselors have noted before, Counselor Gary has mentioned it, I think Counselor Marvel has mentioned it. There is a tremendous amount of acreage currently under the farm forest and open use program in, open space program in Hopkinton and a really large amount of acreage in forestry in particular and also farms. And the properties that fall under that classification really run the gamut. You know, they don't all look like, you know, the, the farm that the Marshes manage. And I do think that those properties are vulnerable to development because the development, solar development is just so intensely lucrative to the operators. That's what gives them the ability to make these upfront payments for the land that they acquire, you know, through these leases. And that's what gives them the wherewithal to make the annual lease payments that, you know, that several farm, farmers have mentioned are, are helpful to them. But if you look at the history of the farm viability ordinance, you know, in 2003, the town enacted a farm viability ordinance, you know, part of a statewide effort. And all of those uses that were identified under the 2003 ordinance were all farm-related activities. In 2016, the town enacted a half-page ordinance that was tacked on to the farm viability ordinance and it added a new activity. And that activity was commercial solar development, which is actually a manufacturing activity. Solar farming is not farming. I didn't grow up in Rhode Island. I grew up in northern Indiana. And I grew up surrounded by cornfields and my extended family were all farmers and this is an industrial use of land. That's, that's what it is. I think it's important to remember that if you look at our zone, zoning ordinances as they exist right now, there are no commercial or industrial, no commercial, industrial or manufacturing uses of land for all intents and purposes permitted in the residential zone, in the RFR 80 residential zone, except for solar farms on solar, yeah, except for, you know, solar installations on farms. That's the only commercial use that's not a farm-related activity that you can pursue in the residential zone. The town council has done a lot of work over the preceding months and the draft ordinance that you've arrived that tonight absent, you know, other than this provision doesn't even remotely resemble what was proposed to you last September. I mean, the skullcoats, after some discussion with a group of Hopkinton citizens about entertaining a project to propose an ordinance that would fix some defects in the PSES resulted in a proposal last September. And this is the town council's ordinance now. You have changed it radically. And if you approve anything, it's the ordinance that you want and that you've decided, you know, to approve. You know, so there's no conspiracy going on here or anything, but the point is the ordinance that you seem to have arrived that tonight, if you end up voting it through would prohibit, would make commercial solar development prohibited in Hopkinton, ground-mounted solar development for profit. Everywhere in town, except for the residential zone on a farm? I mean, that makes no sense. You're going to prohibit it in the manufacturing zone and the commercial zone, but you're going to allow it in the residential zone only, you know, on a farm. That makes no sense to me. So one of the commenters tonight also said that the, the intent of this and what made it so attractive was that it was a source of income for farmers that doesn't require any labor, doesn't require any investment and it doesn't, and it doesn't result in any distraction for them. Well, that's true because all they're really doing is leasing land. And we could be talking tonight about enacting an ordinance to allow farmers to lease land for a storage facility or something like that, you know? I mean, the attractive part is the income, you know, that it provides. But it's in no way related to farming and I would submit that it's completely incongruent with the idea of having a residential zone to allow this use. So then the final thing is, I agree with the assessment that, you know, counselors Marvel and Moffett and Davis have all made, which is that first of all, I mean, as Counselor Davis has said, the, the regulatory apparatus for the current farm, farm provision on chapter 247 just says, kindly refer to the PSES, which you're about to vote out of existence. I mean, you're going to have to have several more meetings to figure out how to, you know, regulate these installations if you don't, you know, don't adopt what, you know, what's been proposed here. And I would challenge the proponents. I, I, I would, I would strongly urge the council to strike chapter 247 or to amend it so that you can only do an accessory use now and continue to, and close the door on, you know, any kind of rush to development. And then I would challenge, you know, counselors, you know, Gary and Hurst and Moffett and Marvel and Davis to, you know, those who want to support some form of development on farms to make a concrete proposal. A lot of weaknesses have been identified, but through all these discussions, I've never heard one counselor make a proposal for how to amend chapter 247, a concrete proposal and and make it work, you know, and fix the problems with it. So I see nothing wrong with this two-step process, you know? Avoid having some, you know, unwanted development now. And if, if you can come up with an ordinance that works and that, you know, wins support of a majority of the council, you can, you can do that, you know, at a future date. So that would be my, that would be my advice on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, do I have a motion to close the public hearing and schedule a, a date for a vote?
Make a motion, Mr. President, make a motion, we close the public forum.
About the public hearing?
Oh, close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Yes, and, and schedule a date for a, a vote.
Yep, just make a, and, and make a motion, we close the public forum and make a date for voting on this.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, Mike. We, we gotta call it public hearings. We're in a public hearing. The forum is closed. Yeah, that's.
Right, motion's on the floor.
For a public hearing. I need you to say public hearing.
Oh, I did. Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
And schedule a date.
Schedule a date for, to vote on this.
Do I have a second? Bobby, muted.
Counselor Hurst, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all, all in favor to close the public hearing and schedule a date to vote?
Hurst, I, I.
Marvel, I.
Moffett, I?
Davis, I.
Okay, motion passes. Um, so next would, would be to Lisa. Do you have any wisdom on this as far as when would be a good time to do this?
So, um, there was quite a bit of changes related to this discussion this evening. You have a town council meeting scheduled for April 5th. I'm not certain that everything would be ready in time. Perhaps it will be. And your next council meeting after that is the 19th. So perhaps that be the date to schedule it for?
Yeah, let's go with that date, Steve.
Okay, is there any discussion on it? Sharon, are you fine with that date?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I, I guess I, I should have spoken up earlier. Based on, and I don't know if I can do this or not because we already voted to close it, but I really did like Joe Moreau's suggestion that, that the, for example, that we should write that the building or zoning officials shall be notified in writing when the, it's really the contaminated solar project begins producing power and I was going to make that on, put that on page 16 as number 28, but I, I, I don't know what to do now.
Well, we can make an amendment.
Okay. Well, hey, so we can still do our thing and I'll make that amendment then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Hello?
Hello, yes, Lisa. Yes, the 19th. So, so do I have a motion to set a date for a decision on April 19th?
Need a time, Steve.
Seven o'clock.
Do we want to?
I make a motion that the, Counselor Hurst, I make a motion that we vote at seven o'clock on April 19th, our decision on this proposal dealing with solar that we've been having a hearing on from many months now.
Counselor, Counselor Moffett, Counselor Gary, I second it.
I'm all in favor.
I, Hurst, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Moffett, I. Motion passes. We will.
I have questions.
Yes.
Please, please don't adjourn yet. Um, so we are going to put this, put this down on, on April 19th. The meeting begins at 7:00 PM. Typically, what we do is set this down under an old business to discuss, consider and potentially vote to either approve or deny those various sections that have been chosen for amendment. And there are a number of different sections, so we're going to have to work on the appropriate language for the agenda item. So that includes language for, because there's a district use table element, the farm viability ordinance element, the PSES ordinance. And there's a section 10 in there too, in regards to zoning, the zoning board, as I recall too. So I will need some guidance when we get to the scheduling of that agenda so that it is ordered properly.
Okay, and we're also, we need to get that chart from, from Mr. Lanfear corrected?
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be another chore to put on the, on the agenda. So do you think that, I mean, 19th is, is, I mean, I understand there's some work. Get it out. So I would assume you would get help from?
I will reach out.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah.
Hey, is there, does the council have anything else or do I have a motion to, to adjourn this meeting?
Scott Bill, Hurst, I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Marvel, I second.
All, all in favor?
Hurst, I.
Marvel, I.
Moffett, I?
Davis, I.
Good night.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thank you. You too.